So are we ready to go, Chris?
You are all set to get started. I'm just trying to get Representative Garlic in. So just give me a couple of minutes, but you can start with the background.
I'll read the proclamation.
That would be great.
It's December 15, 2020, Medfield Board of Selectmen. And pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for on the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. All votes subject to remote participation, therefore will be roll call votes. And we are recording the meeting as we usually do. And we usually start with a moment of appreciation for our troops that are serving around the world. So why don't we do that? Thank you. Hard time for those people to be away from home at the holidays. So I'm trying to get to my agenda, Chris.
All right. Let me just promote a few of the people that we have speaking with us this evening.
We've got too many things left over from the executive session.
And I'm just trying to, I apologize. I'm trying to get Representative Garlic on. We're having an issue. Hi, Senator.
Hey, Christine, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Okay, she's going to try and join us. I'm looking for Mr. Halesworth, but I don't see he is here yet. If I'm missing you, if you're on a different sign-in, just raise your hand and I'll promote you.
So, Chris, I thought I had my agenda lined up, but it turned out to be the agenda for the executive session. So I don't have an agenda in front of me at the moment. So if you can just tell me what's coming.
Absolutely. So the first thing we have is an appointment with Mr. Halesworth to discuss the Medfield train track construction.
And he's not here. Senator, thank you so much for being here with us.
It's the Chairman. Great to be here. Thanks for having me on.
Glad to see you got your Christmas decorations decorated.
It was a rush to get it done before the snow, but we made it.
Representative Garlic, thank you for coming.
I don't see Mr. Halesworth on here, so maybe in the essence of time, Senator Feeney, you can just give us an update on what's going on with the train track construction.
Sure. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Representative Garlic. Great to be on this evening. I know you're dealing with a lot of different challenges. I know you're dealing with, I thought I heard Representative Garlic might have been in. Here we go. I know you're dealing with a lot of different challenges and it hasn't been an easy year, certainly for those in local government. I can appreciate that. You know, hopefully we'll come back soon and talk about the budget and all the great things that Vice Chair of Ways and Means on the House side, my esteemed colleague Representative Garlic has been able to accomplish and, you know, certainly the things that we've been doing. But I know that's not on the agenda for tonight. So Chris reached out and I know we've had some ongoing discussions with a constituent in Medfield, Mr. Halesworth, who reached out to us, I believe, back in July to put an issue on our radar screen that we weren't previously aware of. And that was some of the disruption that was going on with work along the CSX rail track. Excuse me. It's an issue that is not, you know, Medfield is not alone in having to address certainly other communities in my district as well as in my colleagues' districts who have been having to deal with disruption as it relates to ongoing track construction. Just to kind of give a quick primer, and I'm certainly not a railroad expert, although in the last few years I feel like I'm getting there. It's something that's been ongoing, especially along the Framingham Secondary Line, which is kind of the rail spur, obviously that goes from Framingham right through Medfield down into Mansfield, primarily used for CSX freight, of which there has been a lot more of it in recent years, which has caused, you know, significant challenges, not only, you know, in each community because there's just increased amount of trains going back and forth, but really congestion on the whole rail corridor. As you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts purchased the Framingham Secondary Line along with all sorts of rail lines throughout the Commonwealth over the last 10 years. And the idea was to have kind of a, you know, a real long-range plan as it pertains to state rail. Part of that is for commuter rail when you look down on the South Coast. And a lot of it was to make sure that there was redundancy built in and increased capacity for CSX freight. There's a few things to consider with that. Number one, along the Framingham Secondary Line, which is the line I believe that we're talking about, that track was over 100 years old. That rail was what they call jointed rail, was over 100 years old, and it caused all sorts of problems. Many of us who travel through Medfield on a regular basis and certainly residents along the tracks know, you know, there were many times where you would have gate crossings that would be blocked. You know, there was all sorts of issues because the trains couldn't handle that. The increased weight of the trains couldn't handle, the tracks couldn't handle that. So you had issues where they call it bond wire. Bond wire was breaking. You had issues where the jointed rail was actually coming apart, and that caused a lot of problems. So what the state did is they looked at kind of a long-range plan and they said, okay, we have this main Worcester Main Line, which has rail, which is not brand new, but it's in better condition. It's continuous welded rail. It's in a lot better condition than the jointed rail along that line. Is there a way that we can take that rail and kind of repurpose it? Otherwise, it was just going to be, you know, it was going to be tossed aside and scrapped. So they decided to do that. And to do that, they have to, you know, go piece by piece. They put out to bid a contractor bid on the job. Mass Coastal is overseeing the project. They built this continuous welded rail, and that means they have to lay down the ballast stone. They have to smooth out the entire track bed. So again, not a railroad expert, but once Mr. Halesworth reached out and we tried to get to the bottom of it with Mast Dot, there's always an issue on these, and I'll be completely candid with you, when you try and figure out who does what, right? And the finger stuck in and pointed all over the place. My understanding is that the Mast Dots, not the MBTA, but Mast Dot is the owner of that track from Framingham through Mansfield. Different operational, you know, hierarchy than MBTA. MBTA certainly has, you know, has a collaboration with them, but it's a completely different entity. They then hire essentially a contractor, a general contractor like Mass Coastal, who manages these projects, and then they bring in essentially subcontractors to do the work. So we always try and triage as, you know, Representative Garlic and myself and the rest of the delegation in the area, we're always trying to triage where there's pain points. And a lot of the times, it's not even on our radar screen until we have people reach out. So Mr. Halesworth reached out. We found out some of the issues that they were, you know, that they were having, whether it was late nights, early mornings, you know, there's excess noise that happens. And we try and, you know, at least use the bully pulpit and kind of urge them to be, you know, more friendly to the neighborhood. The problem is they don't have a lot of leeway when it comes to the construction, according to them, because of the extreme weather conditions during the summer. They had to worry about heat. That's not conducive to laying down welded rail. And then obviously now there's an issue with winter weather. So they try and, you know, get it done in certain windows of time. And then the second thing to think about with that is the amount of traffic that are on those rails when it comes to commuter rail traffic along the Franklin Line and CSX traffic, really all over the whole Northeast Corridor. They have short amount of contracted windows where they can actually do the work. So that led to an issue. I know, you know, some of the neighbors were put off by a lot of the construction work. I feel for them. You know, I had it going on in my backyard for a while. So it is concerning. The last piece of this, and I'll leave you with this, is that there's no statutory or regulatory requirement that the Mast Dot or the MBTA or Mass Coastal actually notify abutters. They don't even have to notify communities, which is concerning. A lot of the times when we, when we hear about these, you know, projects, we urge them to do so, but we have no direct oversight to force them to do so. We're continuing the conversations with them. Representative Garlic and myself were in constant contact with Mast Dot and the MBTA and a whole host of issues are always pushing them to make sure that they're notifying abutters. You have an idea of when the project is going to be completed and that you have an idea of why it's being done. So I hope that answered some of the questions. You know, we're going to continue to advocate. I would suggest, you know, if it's certainly the pleasure of the board, but I'd be more than happy to work with Representative Garlic. If you want to have a future meeting with Mast Dot, who's actually the owner of that track, like I said, have them come in and kind of give a debrief on the project, you know, figure out where some of the pain points were and what we can do differently going forward. Think overall, it's a good project. Unfortunately, you know, Mr. Halesworth is not wrong and the neighbors aren't wrong. They do have to deal with a lot of issues while the work is ongoing. And I think in the future, we just need to make sure that whoever is managing the project is more responsive to, you know, folks that live in the area and the communities themselves.
Senator Feeney, thank you so much for that information. I see that Mr. Halesworth is here now in the meeting. So maybe, Mr. Halesworth, you could present to us what, why you've asked us to be on your, on our agenda today. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all. Thanks for making time for the matter. And thanks, Paul, for debriefing. I appreciate it. I guess the, and I heard what Paul said, I guess the major concern and what this really highlights is, you know, these jurisdictional issues or lack of coordination that it creates and almost the immunity that Mass Coastal has in this situation compared to, you know, what the town permits in terms of construction for other projects versus, you know, this immunity that Mass Coastal has. No one's trying to stand in the way of infrastructure improvement or freight transportation. Those are all very positive, and I think Paul pointed out some positive upgrades going on. It's just more of just having this big, unresponsive, non-cooperative neighbor very close to large neighborhoods, you know, thickly settled neighborhoods that can basically act with impunity without any care or consideration, not only of the quality of life of the abutters, but also town ordinance laws in terms of noise laws. So I think, you know, trying to use that bully pulpit a little bit more, this is, you know, in all fairness, I appreciate Paul coming on, but, you know, this was something we raised back in August. And this is the first we're hearing about this information. And it's great to get it. It's very basic information. But, you know, without that information, we can see what rumors have started in town that is a result of it, that, you know, this is going to be a commuter rail between Framingham and Patriot Place. And it just, without having that basic information, you know, to calm and reassure the neighborhoods, a lot of negative speculation starts. And a lot of that starts to get focused in the back of people's minds on Town Hall. You know, why isn't Town Hall telling me and informing me about this? So I would say that I would propose that there be some sort of liaison within town with the DOT and Mass Coastal that we can, that can basically be a sounding board for the neighborhoods, for the selectmen, for other boards and an advocate, you know, when needed. For example, you know, when I was canvassing the neighborhood, we had over 100 residents or families sign the petition. You know, people were just throwing up their hands and they're like, why is the train conductor, when we have a railroad crossing with gates at Dale Street, why are they sounding their horn and whistle like a lunatic at 1:00 in the morning every night when the gates are already there, preventing autos from crossing? And why is it unfinished on Cottage Street? But if we go to Town Hall, when I went to the Town Manager, no one had an answer. When I went to Paul's office, he was responsive and helpful, but we weren't getting answers. And frankly, on those issues, you know, we still don't have answers. So even after the upgrade is done, there's going to be ongoing issues from having such a large, distant neighbor. The contractor is based in Minnesota. The former owner, who went bankrupt of Mass Coastal, they went bankrupt and this Mass Coastal was auctioned off in June, was in Colorado. So we have a lot of, you know, distant entities impacting pretty significantly our local town, and we have no connection or contact with them. It's bizarre, and it should change.
I know that I had discussions. Go ahead, Representative Garlic, please.
Yes. So first, I want to say good evening to everyone. I'm glad to see you. Hi, Mr. Halesworth. I just wanted to add some information for clarity because, Peter, you are bringing up the issue of communication, which we find is always at the heart of these issues. But Senator Feeney has been a great leader for the legislative delegation on this issue. And I have to say, the way he became the leader is when you sent an email to my office, to Senator Feeney's office, to other offices, and Senator Feeney was the very first person to answer. And we actually have a paper trail of those emails and calls that were made that unfortunately didn't connect. And I think one of the things that is happening during these COVID times is that time is so elastic for us now. Things that were long ago seemed like they were forever ago, or they didn't happen. And things that, I told my husband that, you know, I had taken care of an issue last week, and he said to me, actually, that was yesterday. So, you know, this whole thing around time. But I think if we're talking about ways to improve communication, that's really helpful. But I do think that I want to publicly thank Senator Feeney for how responsive he has been. And we did do work to try and understand these relationships and how they were intersecting. And I'm sure that there's more work we can do. But this was the first time in my experience that we actually had a clear understanding of CSX and their responsibilities and, you know, where we can intervene. The, we may not get the answers, Peter, but we certainly were asking all the right questions of all the right people. And we share your frustration that there's not more answers. And if it's helpful at all on that issue of the train whistle, my hometown is the town of Needham. We have four commuter rail stops in the town of Needham. We have a constant, ongoing issue around the train whistles, and we can't control it at all because it's all federal regulations. So we could get down on paper, what's federal, what state, what's DOT, what kind of that thing is. But this is a real issue for the neighborhood, and it has been a real conundrum for us working consistently on this.
Well, I would just add that, if I can just add very quickly, the MBTA, I think through DOT, has established quiet zones at crossings. And, you know, I think even though this is freight and it's not MBTA, that type of approach or concept could be applied here. So the idea that we should live in frustration and not push for solutions is not one I'm buying representative.
So that's fine. And we can certainly engage if the Board of Selectmen wants to engage on the issue of quiet zones. I have engaged in that issue for nine years in the town of Needham, and the MBTA does not support quiet zones. And they are, they are supported by the federal government in really rural areas. They'll never support it for us in Medfield at 109. Never, never, never.
Right. Well, this isn't the MBTA. This is DOT.
DOT, but yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Just, if we're going to engage in that, Peter, I'm just, I just want you to know that that will be an incredible frustration because I have dealt with this in person for nine years. Incredible frustration.
Yeah. Senator Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up on what Representative Garlic said. I appreciate her kind words. I, you know, like I said, when I get into public service, I didn't think I was going to be dealing with a lot of railroad issues. But the reason why I, you know, a telephone guy who found himself in the Senate now working essentially on the railroad. One of the things that happened is the work that predates Medfield was in Mansfield, which was kind of at the head end of this, and we dealt with literally these same issues to a T. And it was very frustrating for me, and of course, I became a quick study on it because we were, every step of the way, we ran into federal preemption. You know, whenever you're talking about railroads, I mean, we remember the winch on the gate crossing, you know, that kind of raised the hackles of the FRA. Whenever you're talking about railroad, especially freight, you're always federally preempted. We do have, obviously, we have a relationship with Mast Dot, which is, you know, an agency of the Commonwealth. We work well with them as a delegation. They're responsive to us. The problem is when we're talking about, you know, such high-traffic corridors and trying to, you know, squeeze a lot of work into short windows, these problems, they happen, and they happen in many municipalities. It's not lost on me, the quiet zone issue, that is a larger discussion for the community to take up down the road. And certainly, you know, Representative Garlic and myself, we work for the town. We work for the people of Medfield. And if that's something that the Board decided or the Town Meeting decided they wanted to pursue, we could help you in doing that. The problem is you always err on the side of safety. And I think the federal government feels that way. The FRA feels that way. When you're talking about CSX freight, the length of the trains that they're pulling through, the things that they're carrying, you know, they always err on the side of making sure that there's a conductor or an engineer that gets out. They walk the entire line of the train. It's a difficult proposition when you're talking about freight trains moving through Medfield. And I'll just say that one of the issues that's arisen, and I think a big problem, at least for us as a delegation, we're starting to see in regions across the Commonwealth, is the amount of freight being carried on trains has grown exponentially over the last few years. And now you have these trains that, you know, are carrying so much, it's great in the middle of Nebraska. But, you know, crossing from Framingham down to Mansfield and crossing over 109 creates a difficulty. So the state recognizes that. They've put together, you know, kind of short-term and long-range plans when it comes to rail. On the issue of commuter rail, which I think Mr. Halesworth mentioned, you know, I don't want people to conflate the different issues that happen. And I know the rumors that we get phone calls to our office, emails that come to myself and Representative Garlic. I had a conversation recently with the MBTA and asked them, you know, specifically and straight up, you know, is this project, is this project being completed so that you can add additional commuter rail capacity on a regular basis? And the answer was no. As you know, right now, we're dealing with cuts, not only service cuts, but capital projects that are being cut on the MBTA. This is not in their plan. They have confirmed that with me. It was mentioned publicly years ago when they, when the Commonwealth took over this line, that there could be additional game day service to Gillette Stadium, where they could add in a special train that goes in for events, you know, Patriots games or concerts. But there's no plan even to do that right now. The whole impetus of this project was to make sure that this rail was safe for freight. And as it existed, it wasn't. Over 100-year-old jointed rail had to be replaced. So hopefully that adds some context to it.
Mr. Halesworth, anything else?
No, I just, the only thing I would say is I would ask the Board to give some serious consideration to either appointing someone, an official in town, or maybe a citizen to, you know, act as a sounding board and a liaison with Paul's office, who seems to be taking the lead on this, to be able to real, you know, on a real-time basis, in a formal way, convey the concerns and really start to map out the priorities of what it is we want to try to get remedied and corrected over time. We understand the frustration, but we also can be very persistent and work on it on a piece-by-piece basis to get to that level of quality of life, which I think, you know, abutters deserve. And I think the squeaky wheel can get, can get the grease here in terms of, you know, just continuing to lean on DOT and CSX and Mass Coastal to just be good neighbors.
Mr. Halesworth, you have some interest in being that position, that person who would act as the liaison?
Yes, I would.
Oh, good. Good. Excellent. So I guess the town needs to figure out how to, if it wants to do that and how to do it then. So that's good to hear that you're available for that. I'll just.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, please.
And I don't know whether we have this information, but one observation, at least on the good news side, one thing that I've seen as a result of this project is the railroad crossings across all the roads are now improved. So that's at least good news. I was curious, though, whether this project also involves the refurbishment of the signals and the crossing. We've had continuous problems with gates coming down at the wrong time and the wrong places. And I'm wondering whether part of this upgrade also involves an upgrade of the signaling systems that are associated with it. Do you know?
Yeah, from, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, from a layman's perspective, in my conversations with the MBTA, one of the issues that they were having because of the jointed rail was that the wiring that triggers the signaling was always getting, it was always getting broken. So if you're running a heavy train along it, it would break the wire. The signaling would get messed up. And then, you know, you'd see the arms come down. The signals would be going off at the wrong times. It'd be going on extensively. So they said that with this project, they replace all the wiring, they replace the rail, and that should help the issue with the signaling.
And then the other question I had, there was, I think, Mr. Halesworth, you sent an email, then Senator Feeney replied. It was something like maybe August or September. What I, the reason I noticed is at the time, the projection was that the project would be shutting down for the year, like in a couple of weeks. Obviously, it hasn't because we've had a pretty mild fall. So this is pertinent to the liaison issue. I'm sensing that if, in fact, they kept the work going all through the fall, they are farther along in completing the work that they need to do in Medfield. So while it may be aggravating now that we've gone through the fall, there's, I'm curious whether they are ahead of schedule. Basically, I'm asking the question whether most of them are going to go away soon. So relative to the immediate pressing issue of the aggravation from the project, if we are going to deal with a long-term liaison issue, the intensity of the problem may disappear perhaps sometime, maybe in the spring when the project is done. And what I'm trying to do is get a focus on, if we were going to do something with liaison, what's the liaison doing? It's probably almost by the time it got in place, it might be too late to be a liaison for the project itself. At most, it would be having better communications for what CSX does on a regular basis. Do you have any sense of whether they're ahead of schedule?
I was told recently that they are 99% completed with all the work on that. So, you know, I don't know that that's, it's not 100%, and I don't know what the schedule is going forward. But I was assured that it's, you know, it's about 99% completed. So, and like I said, it doesn't hurt, you know, to Mr. Halesworth, you know, his suggestion and, you know, to the discussion with the chair. If you want to bring in Mast Dot, we're more than happy to say, come in and give us kind of a debriefing. And if there's going to be additional work going forward in the community, you know, at least tell us that now so that we can prepare. And whether it's through a, you know, citizen committee or a liaison from the Board, or however you decide to do that, at least you'll know what's in the pipeline to come, which I think makes sense.
Good. Mike, did you have any questions?
No, I was going to say that Senator Feeney's point, I mean, if they did inform the town, it's easy enough for us to notify. Part of the problem here is that the company doesn't want to go through the trouble of figuring out the addresses of the people who are along the track, which they probably don't have. If they notified us through a liaison, we can figure out those addresses and notify people. I mean, I think in terms of the communication point. And then on the whistle, Christine or Pete, you might have to fill this in. But wasn't the whistle issue at the federal, isn't that an opt-in or an opt-out? And didn't we have an accident about 40 years ago and we opted in on the whistle?
Yes, there was an accident. We had about 20 years ago, there was a group in town that wanted to institute a quiet zone, and the selectmen at the time would not move it forward because of that accident. And if the town decides to become a quiet zone, if we were able to get approval, the town assumes the liability for enacting that quiet zone. So there is some cost associated that the town would take on. Um, the town assumes the liability for enacting that quiet zone. So there is some cost associated that the town would take on. Um, you do have a comment, uh, in the Q and A from, uh, Diane Beatrice. Who says, I have an issue with train noise on Park Street. Train blowing the horn ten times from Oak Street to fifty Park Street, then proceeds up the road to the one oh nine crossing. Blows the horn again to alert cars. This happens each time the train travels by her house until nine o'clock each day, multiple times per day. There's nothing on the tracks to warrant this type of horn blowing. I have it recorded and can email with the recording. There is, um, Senator Feeney and Representative Garlic. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there are standards, uh, federal standards in blowing the train whistle as they approach to the, uh, intersection. So it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, it won't matter if you don't see something on the tracks, they're required to blow the whistle anyway. And we can, maybe if we have mass D O T and we can have a further discussion with them about those regulations.
Yeah, we, we've had that, that similar conversation with them many times. Uh, and they always come in with the, the federal railroad standards on how many times the whistle has to be blown, how long each whistle blast has to last. Um, and most of the time, you know, even though we complain about it, it is being done correctly. If it's not, and somebody has video of it, then, you know, by, by all means, we should raise that issue and put it on their radar screen. Because that shouldn't be happening, especially, you know, at all hours of the night. But ninety percent of the time, at least in my experience, it's been within the standards established by the Federal Railroad Authority.
I just think it would be good to take a measure of, you know, whether the conductors are, you know, properly trained, if they're performing their. Uh, duties accurately or not, or if they're just, you know, somehow improvising. Um, at the expense of, you know, someone like Ms. Beatrice. I think it'd be just a good, a good.
And, and, and honestly, uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Halesworth. You know, I've, I've had this kind of pet peeve of mine, um, for the last few years now on. Um, on C S X and, and some of the other railroad entities across the country, but especially in the Commonwealth. They're doing more with less, so there's less people that are actually working on these trains and that creates complications. It means that trains take longer, you know, to get up to speed from, uh, from certain, um, switches and junction points. And, you know, it means that there's, uh, it just, you know, it takes longer, they have to blow the whistles more and it's, it's been a problem. So I've been on this kick to really advocate for these companies to, um, you know, make sure that there's enough people staffing the trains. Um, but again, we don't have direct oversight, so it, you know, becomes a, an issue where we're advocating and we're shaking the trees and yelling a whole lot. But, you know, we haven't had many, uh, many successes along those lines.
So I was just going to relate that when I, when I started as a selectman twenty years ago, I, I, uh, could run a lot further than I do now. And I used to run along the railroad tracks and near my house is a siding where at night they used to make up the trains. Uh, in those days, they used to, uh, couple the cars. And, and when they coupled the cars, it was incredibly loud bang each time. It was like a, an explosion next to your home. Um, fortunately for our neighborhood, they don't, they don't use that siding for that purpose any longer. But, but when I used to go running along the railroad tracks, I'd see these piles of, of strange colored powders. And I used to talk to Mike Sullivan about it and, and he assured me that there was so much federal preemption that we couldn't really do anything with the roads. And, and I do remember the conversation about the, about the horns and the, and the, and the concern that I know that Mike had at the time. Was about the town assuming some liability if we, if we made it a quiet zone. But that's certainly something that the town could, uh, look at again. It, it sounds like it's not very easy to do, but. It's certainly something that the town could look at and try to figure out and revisit if it's, if it's something that the residents want.
Uh, just to follow up, there's just two more questions. Senator Feeney, you might be able to answer this since you're a train expert. Um, Chris McPotts would like to know, are there regulations around prolonged train idling? That's been an issue near her house and she's heard it near the center of town as well.
Uh, in short, yes, uh, I don't have the statute in front of me. Um, again, an issue that we've, we've gotten federal preemption on. I actually drafted legislation last year, um, that I didn't file because we were told right out of the gate that there would be federal preemption. But there, there are, um, there are limits set in statute that trains can only idle for a certain amount of time. I want to say it's ten minutes, but please don't, don't quote me on that. Once they get the statute in front of me, I can certainly send that over, Chris, and, and, um, we can get the answers. But there, there are, there are standards. The problem is, you know, in, um, Pete just talked about with the coupling of the trains. You know, if they, that, that's a process and that happens, you know, at different points along the line. And you do get to a point where these trains are so long now that they're actually idling and blocking, um, you know, they're, they're brought, blocking roadways. Which becomes an issue for public safety. So they've really tried over the last couple of years to make sure that they're, they're not blocking the roadways. Sometimes that means that now the trains are going to actually stop and idle further down the track. Um, so that they can do their work without blocking the, the grade crossings. So, you know, it's a little bit of, of a give and take, but I can certainly send that over, Chris, to our office and we can get that out to people.
That would be great. So maybe at this point, the next step, since we seem to have a few questions related to the trains, is to have Mass D O T come in to discuss this further.
Okay. Mr. Halesworth, anything further?
No, again, I appreciate, uh, the time and, um, thank you, Paul, for all your, um, information and clarification. I think it'll help, uh, put a lot of citizens at ease, but, uh, you know, a lot of work still to be done. And, you know, let's play the long game for quality of life.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I just want to note too, Representative Galick and I talk, you know, almost on a daily basis. If there are any issues, certainly any constituent or member of the board, you, you know how to find us. Everybody should have our cell phone number. You can reach out to us directly. You know, we do our best to advocate as much as we can. Chris, um, in the town administrator's office, I mean, your T A has been great with us. She, when we had a, raised an issue about, um, some scrap and, and pallets being left on the, the side of the track. That was brought right to our attention. We were able to, to handle that. Um, so just, you know, keep the lines of communication open and, and we're happy to continue to advocate.
Yeah, we like her too. Thank you so much, Senator Feeney. Senator, Representative Garlic, we appreciate your coming.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I did find my agenda, Chris. Um, and our next item is. Mike Quinlan Dale Street School Building Committee to request approval of local actions and approval letter. For P S R submission and discuss slash vote ever source M O U.
Let's get them up.
Chris, I don't think I've ever noticed that you have what are called attorney or lawyer bookcases in your office.
Those are all the, uh, old town reports.
Yeah, but apparently I, I've always heard those are called lawyer bookcases. So we'll have to get you an honorary degree. Hey, Mike, thanks for coming.
No problem. Um, um, Chris, I think, um. I don't know which order you want to discuss these in, but, um, I believe Penny Connor was supposed to be here from, uh, the Energy Committee. As well as EverSource, representing two factions tonight.
Uh, let's see, I don't see Penny on here. Oh, I see Penny, hold on.
Maybe we're very fortunate to have Penny serve on the Energy Committee. She's the, in charge of consumer relations for EverSource.
So with, with that, maybe, maybe we can tackle that first and allow her to end her evening earlier than the rest of us.
Okay. EverSource is offering, uh, people. Hi Penny, thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
So, uh, maybe I can do just a quick introduction. Um, Pete, Penny obviously is going to know this way better than even I do. And, um, and then I'll hand it over to her, but, um. Uh, Pete, I know you've been involved with the Energy Committee as well. Um, and now that, um, we're past the site selection point. We, um, are at a point where we are beginning to explore the possibility of, um, pursuing net zero. Obviously, we've, we've set up a, a sustainability subcommittee to help advise, uh, this, this board on that decision. And how far we go in terms of sustainability, um, because there are multiple sort of points along the line of investment upfront versus long-term savings. Um, and so, um, typically on these school projects. Um, we engage, uh, utility companies, uh, to really discuss, um, incentives and, and, and ways for. Um, these projects to be more, uh, sustainable, um, to consume less energy. Um, to, to use its energy efficiently, et cetera. Um, and EverSource is, is a huge partner of that amongst, uh, you know, uh, its areas of representation throughout Massachusetts. Um, and, um, this is something that we regularly embark on with the communities that, that I work with professionally. Um, that said, um, EverSource, uh, in conjunction with MassSave, developed a, a new program. Specifically targeted to, um, communities that do target what's called net zero energy. Or, um, or net zero ready, or sometimes you'll see it as zero net energy and zero net energy ready. Um, I still haven't figured out why there are two different ways to hyphenate that, but anyway. Um, so, um. Anyway, we're at a point where we want to embark on some, uh, energy modeling, which, uh, EverSource, uh, could assist us with. In terms of their, uh, um, incentives to be able to help us in our decision-making process. Obviously, they want to encourage, uh, energy efficiency in the buildings that, uh, towns, um, build on a regular basis. Elementary schools and actually K twelve schools in general through the M S B A process are really kind of on the cutting edge of this. Uh, this is something that's still relatively new in the industry. Um, and, but more and more towns, including many of the towns we're working with, are pursuing that as, as a, um. Um, as a, in, being incorporated into their projects. So, um, we've noted, um, that the Energy Committee has made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, that this project pursue net zero. Um, and we're, uh, just starting the evaluation process. Um, and we would like to engage EverSource in that and, and garner their assistance. Um, and I won't get into the specifics of this new program, but, um, because I will leave that to Penny. But, um, right now we, we are recommending, um, that we sign off on this memorandum, memorandum of, uh, understanding. Um, with, uh, MassSave and EverSource, such that incentive dollars become available to us to help in the, uh, design process. And then subsequently, uh, through the construction process, and I'll let Penny lay out how that all works. So, um, Penny, I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Penny.
Thank you so much. Um, it's an honor to be here tonight. I work across the nation and across the region, but my biggest passion is locally moving sustainability forward. And I have been honored to be on the Medfield Energy Committee for over a decade now. So what I'm here to talk about is the program, uh, for zero net energy. And we have a great opportunity with the Dale Street School. Mike mentioned, and thank you for your leadership, Mike, in this, that it is a new program. What we are targeting here is to encourage zero net energy buildings. And that equates to an energy usage intensity of twenty-five or less. So typical buildings are sixty, some can be hundred. And labs could be at a six hundred energy usage intensity, which is simply the amount of energy used divided by the square footage. So that's how you get that energy intensity. So you could see how a lab would be very intense. So you can understand twenty-five is very low. It's essentially a zero net energy. And the, I know that you've had some presentations on the benefits of zero net energy buildings. Uh, and they, as we have seen in Lexington, uh, can be positive cash flow from the day one. Because of the various monetary streams that counter veil, obviously the debt financing costs that would be involved. But what I'm here today is for you to consider signing the M O U. At EverSource, we advocate that you sign sooner and get started sooner rather than later. And there is no downside in my mind. I've reviewed this M O U. I've spent time with my team, talking with them about it. So the M O U and, and signing it to say, we are going to pursue zero net energy. Has two, two kind of points that are engaging of the town. The first is that it would start our effort to do the design sessions. And this particular approach requires a series of modeling through the design. To ensure that the design should meet the twenty-five E U I, uh, target that has been set. So you would take various modeling scenarios and double check them along the way as the building gets constructed. And for that, there is a, uh. Success in that place would give an incentive of a dollar twenty-five per square foot. We would offer, there is a co-pay associated with bringing on design specialists in this space. And we have, we're able to tap into the thought leaders across the countries and already have a firm on tap, ready to assist us. Uh, we would contribute ten thousand towards that study as would the town. So there is that commitment from the town. But there is a second incentive that goes along with achieving zero net energy. So let's say that we move through the design, we get it modeled, it tests out that it's going to be twenty-five E U I or less. We move through construction, there is a post-construction incentive opportunity. We would do another test, actual usage post-construction, and there's another, uh, dollar adder. So the total benefit here is two dollars and twenty-five cents per square foot that the town could be, uh, uh, achieving. By signing and committing to, uh, pursuing zero net energy. So as I said, there is no downside, uh, because if you say, you know what, we're not going to make it. Maybe we go through the design and it just doesn't work. We can't, uh, seemingly get the cost or the design or the various elements we would pull together to reduce the energy usage. And maybe to supplement with storage or something like that. We just simply can't get to that twenty-five E U I. Then you simply go to path two. Uh, path two is, um, has the description of, of a whole building E U I reduction. And so the difference in it is that the incentive, that upfront incentive that I mentioned was a dollar twenty-five a square foot. It would be between seventy-five cents and that dollar twenty-five. So it is going to be less. And then there is no second bite at the apple. There's no post, uh, production, post, uh, commissioning test. So there's not another dollar. So you're moving from a two twenty-five, uh, per square foot incentive. Um, down to, uh, path two. Uh, and you don't need to really do anything. We would just adjust it. If it just seemingly doesn't work out, you would be in path two, which would be your normal. Um, let me just compare it to what the legacy was. And by the way, I'm just so thrilled at Mike's leadership at Medfield Energy Committee. Uh, there are only three of these signed M O Us in the state, so we just introduced this program in July. It has become extremely popular. A lot of schools are thinking about it. Schools are great, um, candidates. Because of their usage patterns being, you know, all throughout the week, all throughout the year. But they also are long-lived assets. By that, I mean, they're owned by the town. They're going to be in production for fifty years. They're an asset that you plan and, uh, for an investment and to be there for a long time. So, um, this makes it ripe for the zero net energy. Um, as I said, we have three M O U's signed. We have eight or nine, uh, that were in the legacy program. Now, the legacy program was really more of that whole building targeted reduction. Um, and that's really, as I said, what path two looks like. And then there's a couple of other paths as, as you move lower and aren't able to achieve as much. So, um, I just wanted to reassure you today that at EverSource, we're committed to supporting you. Uh, my team is at the ready. So as Pete mentioned, I am the chief customer officer for EverSource. And as part of that, I am responsible for our sustainability, uh, programs, our energy efficiency, our solar programs. So my team is going to be there, supporting you all the way through this effort. We have really the thought leaders in the industry and would love to work with Mike, with your team. To, um, deliver, uh, zero net energy, uh, school for the town of Medfield.
Gus, I'm sorry, I muted myself. Questions, comments?
Yeah, um, first Penny, thank you for the, the briefing on this. Um, I have a, when, when you're looking at a project like this, there are lots of moving parts. So at the level that I understand all those moving parts, I have a wide range of questions. Mike, I'm going to start with you with the first question. The only reason I'm smart enough to ask this is because I saw your email that you sent to the, to Jeff Marsden. Part of this is the idea that the schools would have to be used for at least four weeks in the summer. Did you hear back from the schools that they, that we actually would be doing that?
I, I haven't, um, um, not that I recall, um, but I could tell you that most school systems do tend to operate summer programs. I, um, I believe we discussed it in the past. I, I, I'm not recalling the specific position. I will get that confirmed. But that is part of the M O U. Um, it's something that, you know, that I've discussed with some of my clients personally as well. Just, um, that's something that we do need to commit to is, is using the classroom wing for, uh, four weeks during the summer. But, um, oftentimes the schools are doing that anyway.
So we don't know for sure, but we don't, we don't, we don't know that we have a problem. Probably we don't, uh, we haven't quite closed the loop on that. Okay. The next question I have is that our last meeting, well, actually at your last meeting. Yeah, uh, the committee, the building committee committed to exploring the, the model building design. the committee, the building committee committed to exploring the the model building design that probably will occur after the beginning part of the year. And and one of the issues that came up on that is whether any of those model building designs actually reflect any of the kinds of characteristics that would be required for a net zero building. So my question is, what are the implications of making this commitment now on actually doing the exploration of the model building design?
So I'll give you my two cents, and Penny, you can add to it if you'd like, but the none of the model schools have been designed to this type of program is that a net zero program. It's still very new, and most of those schools are at least four to five years old. We will be putting in that cover letter, that stipulation to the MSBA that we're still exploring the possibility of going to a net zero building. And what would the implications be on the decision on whether or not we pursue a model school? I think it's it's likely, though I'm not going to promise you anything. I think it's likely that if we do want to pursue net zero, it might be it might rule out the model school program largely because the purpose of the model school program is to minimize redesign. It's basically taking a package design and customizing it as little as possible. And the architects' fees are often cut in half, and thus they don't have the fees available to really customize it to our particular needs. That's sort of the downside of the model school program. So that's my speculation at this point that there's nothing that's been designed that that on the model school program that's been accepted by the MSBA as a model school that would fit this type of program. So that those decisions kind of tie together a little bit. But in terms of the downside to pursuing the MOU, as Penny alluded to, even let's say we did decide a model school was right for us and that we didn't decide not to pursue net zero. We would then bump down to the path two program. So it's not as if we're making a commitment by signing this MOU that says we're definitely doing that zero, and we're definitely doing a custom design as part of that.
So so let me cut to the chase on my question then, Mike. Right? But what I'm really asking here is is the commitment to do this tonight effectively a decision that the model school decision we made doesn't really yeah, we'll go through the we'll go through the motions, but it doesn't mean anything. Or is a commitment to do this tonight, let's say, let's say there is a model school design that pops up. It's not net zero. But we start down this path. Does that path to lend itself? What I'm really asking is, is a commitment tonight basically saying, yeah, forget the model school? Even though we might go through it, or is there a way to commit to this? And if the model school design pops up as a possibility, there's a way to to feed this in to a model school design?
So if most likely, and again, this is speculation until we hear back from the MSBA, but my take on it is most likely if, let's say, we got to a point where we did decide to go model school. What that would mean would be jumping down to path two. And I don't believe any of the model schools would prevent us from pursuing what what path two is really about is a percentage decrease in the energy consumed, basically. And the more you can decrease energy, the more incentive. And as Penny noted, that's a 75 cents to $1.25 cents, $1.25 per square foot. Doesn't I don't believe there's anything and Penny, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's anything that is part of the model school program that would prevent us from pursuing path two. Should we choose that route?
No, there's nothing that would prevent you. And in fact, I, you know, would hope that the model school would also have some flexibility as far as the energy systems that it wouldn't impact your necessary design. You would still need to do an architectural design in your energy systems. And so that's really what we're talking about here.
Okay, next, next some questions for you, Penny. You mentioned the Lexington School. Fred Davis brought Mark Sandin, a selectman from Lexington, in to talk about how the Lexington School managed to basically go net zero at no net cost to town. And I understand there's there's proactive financing measures. It's not like it all just landed with money. But were you involved in, were you actually involved with that project to where you have insight into how they how that design was developed?
No, but I'd be happy to pull my team and engage them to provide you a little bit more information on that. My team really is an expert in this zero net energy, but they combined in Lexington, the SMART program. So they combined solar, they've added in storage. They've got several revenue streams coming in.
Right.
That allowed it to be positive.
So let me let me reveal my crass mercenary characteristics as a selectman. Mike has talked before that the estimate of net zero that he has, and it's just, it's just, you know, parametric estimate, I'm sure, is it adds about $2.5 million to the cost of school. So my first reaction was, well, that's nice, but we already have a school that costs too much as it is. Fred came in with Mark Sandin, who said, well, this is, you know, whatever it is, we were able to do it with no net cost to the town. So then the environmentalists in me came out and said, then let's go for net zero. And so my my real question is, if we go down this net zero, I'm not going to, I'm not going to pin you to the wall on this, but if we go down this net zero path, is it reasonable for the town of Medfield to expect that we would be able to come up with that full spectrum design? It sounds like the net zero you're talking about is not necessarily the storage side of it. But if we actually were to try to come up with a complete design, would you consider it to be feasible for us to achieve this at no net cost to the town, understanding that doesn't mean we don't finance some things that are paid for out of cash flow? How realistic is it for us to look at this as a possibility?
Well, I think it is very realistic. And quite honestly, that's where your architect design that we would be contributing 10,000 would help you because we would start doing the modeling, and we might find that you do want to append renewable resources or storage to get some extra incentives from the SMART program. But that would all be part of that modeling, and then it would be up to the town to make that business case. And I'm sure there would be resources to assist with that. I know Nick is very good at doing some of the numbers, so I'm sure will assist, and my team can assist with that.
Then I have one more kind of technical question on the MOU. It's somewhere deep inside here because I did read it all. There was a comment about towns that pursue this. Will it it precludes contractors who are buying equipment from taking advantage of other ever source rebates on the equipment itself? My first question is, and so if I were to go through the math on what this incentive provides us by way of of an incentive on a per square foot basis on our cost here, the fact that those rebates are taken away from the equipment that the contractors would buy tells me that the price the contractors will charge is going to be whatever those rebates were. Do you have any sense of what the value of those, what if, you know, in other words, what if we said we want to do all this stuff? You keep your incentive. We want to keep the rebates. Do you have any sense of what the total value of rebates for a project like this might be? That we can kind of compare against what the incentives here would total out to be?
I don't have that type of analysis, and I would say that any of these buildings would be custom. So what happens in a custom design is that we would have our engineers model what the usage would have been versus what the usage is with this efficiency of equipment, and we would design some type of incentives associated with that and that equipment. So I don't think you're really leaving money on the table here. You're talking, you know, dollars that are associated with standard incentives are really just to tip it a little bit. This is a much richer incentive. As I said, you're at $2.25. Well, above anything we've been offering.
Those are my questions.
Thank you, Gus.
Mr. Murucchi, questions, comments?
I do not have questions or comments.
I have looked at this MOU in the past, and I think that it makes a lot of sense for the town to go forward with it. I've it came up a lot earlier at the Energy Committee. It seems to me that it's it makes absolute sense for the town to to see what we can get by starting on this process. And so it's just a data gathering at this point, as Penny points out. If you don't go to net zero, you just drop down and you get incentives of 75 cents to $1.25 per square foot for your building instead. So and and from having talked with Kim Cullinan, who works with Penny about it, she assured me that the sooner we get into it, the better the town will be in terms of getting the a better product at the at the out end. So I think it makes sense for us to go ahead on this. Anybody else have questions, comments? Chris, Nick, Mike? Mike Quinlan?
So I'll ask one final question on the wording. The very first item on project eligibility says project teams must commit to a goal of either zero net energy, zero net energy ready or passive house. I want to, when we had this discussion in our, I think, the last meeting, it was around, is it worth exploring this? And so that was real easy to say yes. The word commit, I kind of want to understand what that means. And Mike, this probably is, it's not really you, Penny. I think it's Mike. When we say we are committing to this goal, what I think I hear today is we are committing to exploring the goal. If the goal doesn't make sense, we have a fallback that's almost an unconstrained fallback from a design standpoint. Understand, my questions are not because I'm anti that zero. It's that I'm cautious about choosing a fork in a road before we're far enough down the path to really have been able to take the good hard look at total costs. And that's that's where I'm coming from. Am I understanding commitment here the correct way that this does not distort the minds of architects, distort your committee to commit to a path that we, if we if we go down and it doesn't make sense that we can't get on a practical alternative path if we need to?
That's that's the way I understand it. My experience with this, it's the way I've I've been told by ever source, both by Penny and and by Kim Cullinan. And I work with Kim on multiple projects. I'm trying to convince Ashlyn right now to switch over to this path as well. So I've had a lot of conversations about this, and that's that's the commitment that we've received from them that we can pursue path two. The only thing I want to clarify about path two is there's one word I would take out from what you just said, and that's unconstrained. There are constraints. There are restrictions to the program. That said, a school project that we would pursue under path two, let's say we decide not to pursue net zero. Then there's certain constraints to it, right? We still need to design it. We still need to meet certain energy efficiency goals in order to receive the incentive. So there are constraints per se, but it's not something that would preclude us from pursuing that path in the future, should we decide not to go with path one.
Penny, I don't know ever source directly, but I can only, you know, given what Mike just said about the model schools and given MSBA's role in promoting school design, if there were a way, if there were a way for ever source to help close the gap between the current state of the art and model school designs, or even schools that are being designed, if there's a way to get closer to environmentally responsible design, I would think that would be something in ever sources interest to want to do. So when we're talking about getting technical support from ever source, I guess what I'm saying is I'm assuming we're going to get, we can expect to get somewhat enthusiastic support. Given you know where we're trying to go, you know where we would like to get. I'm making it, I'm barking around the cost to get there because I, there's too much of this process that loses sight of that. And I don't want to do that, but I'm not doing it just to kind of like, yeah, we can get it done cheaper. Who cares what it's like in 20 years? It's not that. It feels to me like this could be a collaborative experience for ever source that would help ever source get in the direction that they would probably like to go to help make it easier for towns to build schools that have more of this kind of stuff. And is that a fair, Pollyannaish, optimistic statement?
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, you you read my mind. I intend to circle back with my team. It would certainly behoove advancing our state goals. The state has a goal of achieving, you know, 80% reduction by 2050. If the Commonwealth wants to reach that, then we've got to align all of our programs, and that includes the design on a model school. So I am going to take that back and see what we can do with the state to fix those model schools so that they incorporate and include the incentive that drive the zero net energy. It's a brilliant idea. And I really applaud you on addressing cost. When I come from ever source, we are always looking at the cost because we're concerned about all of this passes through to our, all of our customers as they pay for in rates. And so this prudency of understanding cost, I think, is appropriate. You have to defend it to the town. So kudos on that. And we will be enthusiastic in working with Mike and the team and supporting this happening. But I really like the idea of following up on the model schools.
It really, it really does cry out for the Massachusetts School Building Authority to adopt a net zero model school.
Yeah. In order for that, in order for that to happen, just on the MSBA side, basically, if one of these projects, and again, this is so new, you got to understand that even Lexington is is still hasn't even functioned for a full year yet. That basically, these, these, once these buildings that do pursue this, and they prove out to be successful, they then apply to the MSBA to to be a part of the program. And the MSBA reviews the project and decides which ones may be acceptable as future model schools. So that would be sort of the next steps and and but in order to get there, the first thing that needs to happen is a couple of these need to get built and then pass the the rigors of the MSBA's oversight from an educational perspective and a cost perspective to make sure that they're justified in putting them in the program.
Yep, okay.
Actually, I think Fred Davis is waiting to say something.
Hi, Fred. Thanks for coming.
Okay, Pete, and I think it's just a minor point, Penny. I think the few points back, one of Gus's questions asking about incentives, which ones were disallowed? I think the clause disallows just the upstream incentives. I think that's what he was referring to, and he might not know what upstream versus downstream means.
Now, actually, Fred, I was, there was in the in the agreement, there was a discussion. There apparently there are incentives that are offered by ever source to contractors buying
Exactly.
So it's, and it basically said that in agreeing to this agreement, we would commit to not taking advantage of any of those rebates or whatever they're called.
Right.
Penny has said that, but those amounts are probably small.
I'm looking at the, these are the upstream incentives. These are the the standard that we would use for the more simple designs. They're just based on the basic kind of pro forma savings we would expect. So anything beyond that, the custom always gets enhanced incentive. So this is a better deal.
Thanks, Fred. Anything else?
I think you, well, I think you need to vote to authorize me to sign the application.
Yep, we need a motion for that effect.
So I would move that we authorize Christine Truwire to sign the application for the new construction and major renovations Mass Save Memorandum of Understanding for Path One Zero Net Energy. I think Gus seconded, Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murphy? He's muted, but I think he said aye. As the clerk, I'm authorized to read lips, and I recorded as an aye.
Thank you, Mr. Murucchi.
Mr. Murucchi, aye, yes.
Let the record read. That was an aye. I mean, open meeting law compliance, Gus. Thank you. All right, Penny, thank you so much for coming. Are you going to stay for the rest of the Mike Quinlan discussion or not?
I don't think it's necessary. It's not pertinent necessarily to her.
Okay. So Mike, why don't you go ahead with the rest of your presentation? Local actions and approval letter for PSR submission.
So so at the PSR submission, basically, the the school committee chair, the superintendent, and the chair of the Board of Selectmen typically sign a letter that states that that outlines basically all of the actions and approvals that the town has taken during during this phase and outlines all the dates for public meetings, community forums, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that was drafted up and presented by our project management team. And then that was presented for signature. So my understanding is there was a a letter issued. I think I just saw it this morning. Basically outlining a couple of things that may have been over some oversights on some open meeting law things that may not be fully up to speed. So we should discuss that and discuss, you know, how you'd like to proceed. What I can tell you is we're already the the design and architecture, the design and OPM teams are already working on correcting the the record on some meeting minutes and some agendas, and I'm already working on rescheduling a meeting just so we can revote those to make sure all our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted properly such that there are no open meeting law issues with that. such that there are no open meeting law issues with that. So that's where it stands. I don't know, Christine, if you had any, if you've updated the selectmen on, on that review. You know, I think there's, there's a couple of ways we can approach this. One is, you know, we could have, if you are open to it, the board of selectmen could approve it contingent on us cleaning up those two issues that were outlined by Mr. Hyman. Or the other thing would be to table it, in which case we, you would have to wait until after we revote some of these meeting minutes and agendas and, and subcommittee appointments, just to make sure that those are all in line, which I'm trying to get scheduled for early next week. All of this needs to occur before the 29th at the latest. We were hoping to get things buttoned up by, and submitted before the holidays, but we do have till the 29th to get this buttoned up. And so I leave it up to you to decide how to proceed with this.
There was a recommendation from town council, I think it was to have the buttoning up first before we sign, if I'm not mistaken, Chris?
That is correct, and Mark is here at the meeting, can speak to that.
Hi, Mark, I see your phone number.
Yep. So the problem I'm having is the way this, this letter is worded has affirmative representation by the various signatories that the open meeting law has been complied with. And the references in, within the content of the letter itself, specific. And I've been informed that there was some items left out or omitted from the actual minutes that need to go back and be included in the minutes. The letter is written concurrently as referencing the attached documents that already exist. So frankly, my advice is to err on the side of caution and make sure that everything is there that's supposed to be there in the form it's supposed to be before you sign it.
So if I could just, just add on that first topic. Yeah, so the, the, the complaint that was received was that the meeting minutes did not have the names of the documents that were shared in that meeting, in those meetings listed within the minutes themselves. All of the documents that, that were part of those meetings are still publicly posted. There's still a part of the, the, the public record. But the, we've had the OPM go back and redo the minutes such that the names of those documents are then included in the minutes. So we will, we will revote those as soon as I'm able to get another SBC quorum together.
Yeah, the problem is I've gone back, I reviewed the open meeting law, the regulations from the attorney general's office and the attorney general's guidance. And all three require specifically the listing of exhibits, even though the documents are also included as part of the package and are required to be kept as part of the public records, but they specifically, in all three places, the statute, the regs and the guidance specify a list of the documents.
Yep, so we're, we're, again, we're adding that to all of the meeting minutes and we will repost those as amended and make sure that we meet that, that, that part of the open meeting law.
Is there a selectmen's meeting between now and a deadline date?
There will be one, as it turns out. We have, we have a couple of other things from our agenda that have been deferred from tonight that need action before the end of the year, so we're going to have another meeting.
Okay, because otherwise you could do a conditional vote, but that would put the onus on Pete signing as the chair to make sure that all these things have been done. And frankly, I'm not sure that's fair to do that to him.
Thanks for looking out for me.
Well, as opposed to, as opposed to Mike coming and saying it's a done deal, it's already done and here it is.
Yep.
Before you sign your name.
Yep, so it sounds like the, the, the building committee will take care of dotting the Is and crossing the Ts and then we'll, we'll get the, the revised request.
It's going to require two others to re-sign that already have signed too.
Yep, okay. We want to be in compliance with the open meeting law for sure, so.
Mr. Chair, you have a comment in the Q and A. Kristen Cupot says, on the local approvals and actions letter, page 11, it's noted the presentation materials, meeting minutes and summary materials can be found on the town website in addition to the school website. However, unless I'm missing something, I cannot locate these documents on the town website. For regular meetings, even if you go to the school website and click on minutes and go to the town website, all minutes since October 22nd are missing and a number of older ones are missing too. Some of those statements being made to MSBA are not accurate. In terms of documents on our website, we provide a link directly to the school website. We don't list those documents separately on the town website. We just provided one link to the project website so we could have one place that was being updated with that. If there are minutes between October 22nd and the December 9th meeting, I'll coordinate with Gina. She may have sent them to me in the last couple of days. I've been focused on collective bargaining, so I haven't had a chance to update anything on the website recently.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So my recommendation, if you're revising this, would be to double check that all your references are sufficiently detailed and accurate that somebody can follow them and get to the documents that are being referenced.
Okay. Will do then. Anything further on this? Then we're ready for our next agenda item, is that correct? Thanks for coming, Mike.
No problem, thank you all.
Appreciate your work for the town on this and the update for this.
Let me know, let me know when that next BOS meeting is scheduled for so we can make sure we're all ready for you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Take care, happy holidays.
December 29th was the cutoff, right?
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need to have it signed so we can submit it on the 29th at the absolute latest.
Okay.
And Mike, you got to let Christine know in all of those corrections. I'm not sure that it's our meeting that needs to be the gating criteria. It might be when you know everything is done, given, given the flexibility of Zoom and the quietness of the holiday period.
Why don't we leave it that way, Mike, that you'll get your ducks in, in order and then you'll let Chris know.
Yeah, but right now I'm looking to schedule an SBC meeting for Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. I'm waiting to hear back from my committee on their availability. And, but that's the goal and these are relatively simply, simple administrative things. It's just a matter of listing the materials and making, making sure that they're on the meeting minutes and things like that. And everything's all up to speed, so hopefully we can do that in time. I don't, I don't see a problem with it right now, but I'll let you know if there is a problem.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Take care, bye now.
Our next appointment before the select word is the Board of Health to provide an update on COVID-19.
Just going to promote the members of the Board of Health.
Want to thank the Board of Health for all you've done for the town in the past nine months. Thank you guys for your hard work. Carol, thank you for coming.
Hi, Pete, Gus, Christine, Mike, Nick.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Steve has a presentation, a brief update of where we are.
Oh, okay, thanks Steve, go ahead.
Okay, sure, I'm gonna just see if I can share my screen. I'll share the right one here.
You have a very professional background, Steve, we need you to organize our backgrounds, I think.
Oh, hopefully, I've been struggling with internet connection tonight with Xfinity along with my neighbors. So hopefully this will, hopefully this will, I won't have any issues during this few minutes. So I'm just going to, I thought I'd give a little briefing on behalf of my fellow board members. A little bit about COVID over the past few months. So as you know, of course, the Board of Health is myself, Carol Reed, Melissa Coughlin, Holly Rand and Kathy Thompson. And we're lucky that we have a lot of clinicians on our board and some public health expertise as well. So it's been a great group to work with, although I will say that it's been a little bit different than you all suggested it would be when you recruited us. But, and I think Holly wanted me to make sure to mention that, Mike.
Steve, too late, too late.
It's all right, it's all right.
Appreciate it.
It's been interesting. Okay, so just to start, you know, to, to just sort of give a quick overview of the trends with the COVID-19 in Medfield. And I just wanted to use this slide to kind of highlight the dashboard that the town has put together, which you can access through the town's website on the Board of Health page. There's a link to the dashboard which gets updated every week with the information that you're looking at here, plus a little bit more. Main thing to highlight, as you all know, these stoplight metrics with the green, yellow, red, having to do with the average daily incidence over the past two week period. And right now we're in yellow, we've been in yellow for a little bit. If you look at that graph on the bottom, you'll see, you'll see that, you know, this basically spans, all these graphs here go from basically July 15th until now, or December 10th is the last data point. So you can, as see, as you know, Medfield was pretty much spared in the first little wave of COVID in the spring. And through, really through the summer, even into October, we were at pretty low levels. And then mid-October, you see the, the, the growth in new cases. Really to reaching a high point just in the last week. And just to illustrate that, you know, we've had 172 cases since the pandemic began. At least that's how many confirmed cases are reported. But 27% of them are just in the last two weeks. So just to give you a sense of, you know, how, how fast it's been going up. There are some, some encouraging trends that, at, at least at the state level, that maybe things are slowing. But it's, you know, it's hard to know yet, so we need to be prepared. The other thing I wanted to flag was that this average daily incidence rate can be confusing. We've had some forum, top forum, and, and we've, we've talked at school committee meetings about this. Just to remember that that's the average number of new confirmed cases per day, per 100,000 people population. And of course, Medfield only has about 13,000 people. So when you see a number like 29 there, you scale that to Medfield, you're really talking about 3.75 cases or four, you know, rounded up to four cases per day. Right, so just put it on the scale of the actual town. In terms of who's getting coronavirus in Medfield by age, you can see that over in, on the, I guess it's the right hand side, case count by age. And where the horizontal axis is age groups in sort of 10-year buckets. So you have kids zero to nine on the far left going over to 80 plus. And you can kind of see that most of the cases are happening either in this younger group, like 10 to 19 or 20 to 29, which is the sort of peak group. And then there's another peak over in the 50 to 59 group, for whatever reason. I had intended to take a look and see if that matches state level data, but I didn't get a chance to because I was fighting some technology issues this evening. But that's the story in Medfield and that's the cumulative cases since the beginning of the pandemic. And the little orange bars on top are basically the last cases in the last two weeks, which are basically following the same pattern. And then in the bottom with the orange bars and the gray line, this is your volume of testing is the orange bars. And the gray line, which is a little faint, is the percent of those tests which is positive. And you know, that's a key metric for the state in terms of, you know, keeping things open, reopening schools, closing schools and so forth. So we watch that as well. And the idea here is that if the, you know, it's obviously a bad sign if the percentage of tests are positive. Because it means one of two things. If you look at the very beginning of the pandemic, we had a higher, higher positivity rate right at the beginning. That was probably because the only people that were getting tested were people that already had symptoms and were going in and testing was scarce. And then testing became available and the positivity rate was pretty low. And now we're seeing the positivity rate because the disease is actually spreading and, and people are actually getting positive. So that, that's the other metric that you can find on our dashboard. The general theme here is that Medfield has tended to do pretty well relative to communities around it. But we haven't been completely spared and I would say we need to remain vigilant over these winter months. One of the key challenges and I, I wanted to highlight for you, because I think this is probably the, the one that's the, one of the more relevant ones where people in the town can kind of help making a difference and, and something that you should also be aware of and that we get questions about a lot. And that has to do with contact tracing. So contact tracing was really working nicely until recently in the last, you know, six, eight weeks, when things have started scaling up. Because each new case can generate many close contacts that require tracing. And basically in Medfield, we contract out our public health nursing. Those are the people who do the contact tracing and that's the visiting nurse association. And we used to have just one person because there was really hardly very much contact tracing of infectious diseases to do. But now there's a lot to do. They actually added personnel, so now we have two individuals who kind of serve Medfield. But they also serve many other towns and they're spread pretty thin now as, as the epidemic has been increasing. And so what does that mean? Well, one, one thing that means is that if they don't, if they can't deal with the cases quick enough, then the cases get pushed on to the state. The state has something called the Contact Tracing Center, which is a backstop. And the cases go there. But that CTC, it's called, has also been stretched thin. And, you know, I know Carol can speak to the fact that she attends all, all of these meetings, weekly meetings, and there's lots of complaints from many communities or concerns about the CTC and whether they're following up the cases in a, in a timeframe that would be ideal. And basically often taking too long. And they don't really have the resources to follow up when people don't answer the phone and so forth. And what you end up with is a fairly long lag between when someone has been identified as a contact by a positive case and when that person who is the contact gets notified by a public health nurse and called what to do about it, which is basically to quarantine and so forth. So for Medfield, that's been a little bit of an issue, but fortunately, and I know Kathy, who's recently joined our board is just, you know, and, and leads the school nurses who have been great, especially, you know, with school related cases and sort of triaging this contact tracing. Because the school nurses often find out about the cases even before they're in the state's database system because the parents contact schools and so forth. So, and they've been doing a lot of the contact tracing effort, sort of, I'd say like unofficially, just letting families know in a sort of triage capacity. And maybe Kathy can speak to this if she wants to describe it in more detail or if you have questions. But she basically, the school nurses are sort of let, when it's a school related case, letting the people know, the public health nurse will be contacting you, but you know, until then, you should, you know, act like you are a close contact and, you know, don't move around, you know, kind of sit tight until that public health nurse calls you. The thing I wanted to highlight here is a really, there is, we're not going to solve the resource issue immediately. Everywhere is burdened by a lack of, you know, sufficient contact tracing and public health nursing services. You know, I think maybe Christine, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this. You know, I think maybe Christine, I don't know if you want to speak to this or you already have, but I know there's an effort underway to maybe augment public health nursing in Medfield by bringing some of those resources in-house instead of under contracted, which would probably help us in this capacity, but also would give us more control over the data and our visibility over what's going on. And that could, I think, everyone on the Board of Health would appreciate that, that that could help us a lot. And that's something we're struggling with now. But in terms of the contact tracing itself, this really does rely on Medfield residents' cooperation. And, you know, one of the things that, that the Department of Public Health says a lot, the governor says, you know, to do your part and answer that call. If the state's contact tracing center is calling you, if the local VNA, Visiting Nurse Association calls you, you know, make sure to take that call or call them back or, or answer it. Don't avoid it. Because that's a really a key tool in, in keeping the spread down and protecting our community. The other thing I wanted to mention about briefly is the change in quarantine guidance, which has kind of been a struggle for people to keep up with, including us. So, but this is sort of good news, I would say. So as the pandemic has gone on, we've learned more about the disease. And basically, what we've learned is that one of the things that we've learned, we've learned a lot, but one of the things we've learned is that if you don't, if you were, had an exposure event where you were a close contact, but then 10 days go by and you've had no symptoms, it's very unlikely that you were infected by that exposure. So where the previous guidance was that you had to quarantine for 14 days, no exceptions, that's no longer the case. They've shortened the duration, so now it's only 10 days. If you make it through 10 full days after the exposure with no symptoms, then you can be released from quarantine. Even better, for some perhaps, there's a test-out option. So if you are in quarantine because you're a close contact, and then on day five or after day five, you go get a test and you test negative, then you can be released from quarantine after the completion of day seven. Basically, you get released on day eight, you're free from quarantine. So quarantine's gotten a lot shorter, from 14 days down to theoretically, you know, seven days. So, so that's good news. One of the, there are a few caveats to this, and one of them is that you're supposed to still monitor yourself for symptoms for the full 14 days, even though the probability is low. You know, if you test negative on day five, it's still possible that you could end up developing symptoms, so you can't just totally ignore it. And just another thing that we've been trying to communicate to people is that, you know, if you, if you end up being a close contact, you might not want to go get tested. Well, you should talk to your doctor or your clinician, not to me. But you may want to talk to your clinician before rushing out and getting tested, like the first day you find out you're a close contact or you find out your kid is a close contact. You might want to wait until day five because there's an incubation period, and there's a good chance if you, even if you were infected, if you test the first day after the exposure, you're probably going to test negative and it's going to be a false negative. Another thing I wanted to mention here is that, you know, another challenge with the epidemic now is it's ground on for a long time. Is, you know, there are a number of people, you know, struggling with various issues, social isolation, you know, mental health issues, substance abuse challenges, you know. I mean, I'm, as like all of you, I mean, I'm living with my entire immediate family in the house every day, and that sometimes gets to be a little much. And, and then, you know, it's not always, oh, what do you do about it? You know, you can't, you can't really escape it, sometimes it feels like. So there, I just wanted to highlight these resources that Carol pulled together, which are also on our website. And within Medfield, there's Medfield Youth Outreach. The, the center at Medfield, of course, is still doing support services for older adults and so forth. And there's a number of other resources here depending on the type of support needed. If you ever, you know, if you have, so, you know, you can look to the Board of Health website for, for some of these resources. Finally, just to end on a bright note, that everyone knows that there's now vaccines forthcoming. Some are already being vaccinated in Massachusetts as of today, I guess. And if you're looking for more information about the timeline for that and whether you qualify, there's, there's a state website that's just been stood up with answers a lot of questions about the vaccine. I think the main thing just to realize, though, is that, you know, it's not going to be immediate, you know, really large, we're not going to reach herd immunity until, you know, at best, you know, in the, you know, in the fall or maybe late summer of next year, if we're lucky, depending on if new vaccines come online. So it's not like we can immediately relax. There's still a lot of people at risk. The projections in terms of cases and deaths still look pretty bad if we, if we relax. And as you know, the state has taken some efforts to sort of tighten things up a little bit recently. So there's the mask-up order, which says everybody has to wear a mask whenever in public. And the town of Medfield's ordered some signs to just encourage people about that. And that's, those are going to be put around town soon, I believe. They're, they've arrived at the all-out townhouse. Also, the governor has kind of rolled back some of the reopening to Phase 3 Step 1, so there are some capacity restrictions that affect restaurants, offices, gyms, and outdoor events and so forth. There's, I put the website, of course, has information about all of that. And then we have a health agent who works with local businesses on those kinds of things as well, and is a resource there. So you can always contact the Board of Health to talk to them. And then there is still a shelter-in-place order, which basically says that you should be trying to stay home between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And if, I'd just like to encourage people to actually do those things and respect those things because until that vaccine gets distributed, you know, that's what we rely on, to keep things under control and keep our schools as open as possible and so forth. Thanks. That's it.
Thanks so much, Steve. Questions from Gus? Comments?
Hey Steve, just one, just one, this is a curiosity question. You showed the 3% positive on the testing, and this is me just, this is one of these things, it's a topic that if you're not in the area, you just wander through the, the mist and you pick things up. Somewhere back in the beginning of the summer, I remember reading a couple of articles that basically were quoting various health officials in different states. And one of the points that they made was that when the testing, the positivity rate climbed above 8%, that was an indicator of kind of a exponential surge, kind of a growth in the infection rate. Is that, was that a myth in June or whenever I heard it? Is there, and when we see 3% here, that says the cases are spreading. But does that basically say it's not an explosive, you know, exponential growth? It's that we have an increase, but not at the, you know, explosive level? Is that kind of way to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I, I think it's fair to characterize the recent surge that we're having as exponential growth. It's just a matter of what is the value of that exponent? And so, you know, you can have exponential growth that's doubling every three days or exponential growth that's doubling every seven days. So we're, we're in it. I, I'm not familiar exactly with the, you know, the, the 8% threat threshold you're referring to. But there's no question that, you know, you know, if you're seeing that positivity creep up, there's, you know, there's one, one or two things are happening. Either the only people getting tested are those that are symptomatic because there's a scarcity of tests or, you know, there's a lot of spread. And, and I think that's kind of where we are now, because there's not so much of a shortage of tests at this point.
Okay, thanks. Mike? Oh, Carol, go ahead.
The governor said today, and my board probably knows this, he said the state is 5.7%. And that, you know, by now, I'm not the medical experts here or the epidemiologist, but the cases then lead to hospitalizations. And the huge concern, I could hear it in the governor's voice today, and then the doctor from Mass General, which I've really appreciated hearing from, is the impact on healthcare and the healthcare system. But I just wanted to say, that's 5.7 in our hospitals here in Boston, the best in the world are nearing capacity. And as I said, Holly and Melissa could probably speak to that better than mine, I could. So I've not heard eight as a threshold. I know the governor uses Johns Hopkins data, but, but I haven't heard eight, but I know today from 5.7, it's, it's, that's all I'll say.
Holly and Melissa, how are your hospitals holding up?
We're getting busy. Melissa and I are at the same hospital. We're both at the Brigham. I think we have 78 COVID patients right now, and Mass General has 140. About that. They always have a little bit more than we do. But it's getting pretty busy. And the problem is not only the COVID patients, it's the people who are actually hospitalized are very, very sick with other chronic conditions, which wears the system down because no one's really coming to the hospital with things that are benign. So, you know, we're all getting redeployed again. It's very similar to the spring.
There is a little bit of a difference for us, and as bedside nurses, we really cut the numbers short back in March, April, and May. We shut down to private rooms. We cut out lots of the elective surgeries. We doubled up on staff members, and we found that that really wasn't really good at all for people who have these chronic conditions and we're putting off surgeries. So the impact of that was very negative. So the hospital has remained relatively open, rather than last week, I think they cut down elective surgeries. But brain and spine, which I work on, are never elective, so we're always full. And then we're now sort of cohorting the COVID patients on our floor. So it's just, it's really, it's not a, it's not a good place right now. The good news is, is that we know more about the virus. We have the PPE. And, and we have better treatment plans in place. So with every negative, there's a few positives, I would.
My, my neighbor runs the emergency response at Beth Israel Deaconess. If you ever wanted to talk to somebody who's figuring things out from a different hospital, I'm sure she'd be happy to talk to you. They got close, I think, to their capacity in the ICUs. I think they created new ICU rooms somehow. Mike, did you have any questions, comments about?
No, no questions. My only comment is, once again, thank you to you all for doing this. We're really fortunate that we have you on board. And yes, Holly and Stephen, I certainly did not accurately describe what the year was going to be like for you. And, but thank you for, for sticking with it. And you've made a big difference in town, and we're very fortunate to have you all in place.
And Kathy joined even though she knew what it was going to be like.
Shout out to Kathy. She's done countless hours on the weekends and above and beyond with contact tracing and stuff for the board. It's amazing.
That's exactly what I was going to say. And thank you, Kathy, because, as Steve pointed out, our, our visiting nurse, you, you've all heard me before, that I feel like Medfield needs and deserves a staff person that's a public health nurse. And that person can be the liaison with Kathy in the schools. But if, if we didn't have Kathy really taking the lead on these cases and guiding families and students, because the, the data information comes into the Maven, state Maven system, and that can be a lag as to a positive case. But Kathy will often find out well before a positive case with testing delays shows up in the system that the public health nurse can access. So she's taken the lead. And I, all ages owe her a debt of gratitude, and I mean that like Melissa and Holly and Steve feel. So thank you, Kathy.
You're most welcome.
And, and the other thing I wanted to say, Steve pointed out the dashboard, and we all really appreciate, I know Christine and Nick worked on that. Nick, we appreciate it. And I wanted to point out, I looked, we, we really advocated as a board for a breakdown by age. And how that happens is the, the visiting nurse has to go in and count the cases by age. So the state just breaks down, I think, 0 to 19 age, which, which we felt wasn't a clear snapshot of, of cases. So we prioritize breaking the ages down by what you see on the dashboard. And we appreciate Christine and Nick putting that together, because that was a lot of meetings and a lot of conversations. And we all, as a board, and I, I believe it or not, will stop talking, felt it was really important for the town to know where the positive cases were coming down through age. So we appreciate that, Nick and Christine.
It's very interesting data, actually, by the age breakdown.
Yes. What are those 50-year-olds doing, is the question?
Right, so.
So is there anything else that the Board of?
20-year-olds, apparently.
I didn't. Right.
Misregard.
And I just also want to say, in the summer, Steve allowed us to vote him as our school liaison. So not only did he become the chair on October 1st, he's also our school liaison, and he works really closely with the schools and with Kathy. And we all appreciate that because we all know the stress on parents and kids, and everyone sees and understands. So I feel like this board is really dedicated to try to support the school and support the town as well, and all-age residents. So these are really hard times.
Absolutely are.
You know, Steve mentioned the resources. Those were put together by the Suicide Prevention Coalition a few years ago, and you've all seen them. But another one, when people call me or in my work, the governor has the MASS 211. You dial 211 from a landline or a mobile phone, and then you press 26. And 24/7, you can ask a question about COVID. And what we're seeing from a behavioral health standpoint is the high level of anxiety and stress. And people call, you can ask about testing or any kind of simple question. And the other resource that I encourage people to call is the 24/7 line at Riverside. You can speak to a social worker at any time. And they still do the mobile crisis, but just even to talk. If you don't need someone to come out, you can certainly, you know, people check in on someone they care about. But, but, but there are supports. And there's FEMA, and Jim McCauley at Riverside has been talking about the work they're doing with school districts that a lot of people don't know about, with resources. And there's a local liaison, Elizabeth Rego. And I'm sure Kathy McDonald has her name, but we're lucky to have Kathy and, and then Roberta. But people are isolated, but I really feel in my heart, they're not alone here in Medfield. And if we can all just make sure we remind people there are places to call and people to talk to, even if you can't see them quickly face-to-face. So it's not, it's not easy, but we're not alone.
Thanks, Carol. So as, as, as a Board of Health, is there anything that the select board can be doing to assist you or to make your stress levels lower?
Yeah, I was trying to think about that. Yeah, I was trying to think about that as I was getting prepared, um, uh, for tonight. But I think, uh, I think we've been in, in pretty good shape. Uh, you know, some of the, I think the biggest challenges that we've had as a board probably, like many towns, has been, um, dealing with a, a constant flow of ever-changing information and policies from the state. Um, and getting straight what they all mean and then reacting to them. And sometimes, you know, I think early on, we, we tended to be acting a little bit ahead of where the state was. Um, and, and, and now, of course, the state has been more proactive along, you know, in terms of the school reopening and all kinds of like reopening policies, they've sort of taken control of that, but it also has shifted under our feet from time to time. A big one being, you know, with the stoplight metrics, you know, the, the green, yellow, red, um, was defined in a certain way. And then they just changed it to me be something different and kind of, uh, you know, you know, if you're making policy based on those metrics and then the state changes, then that, that creates some, some challenges. I don't, I don't know that there's anything that the Board of Selectmen can do about it other than just, you know, I think one thing is just for people to have some kind of, you know, patience with anybody who's trying to make policy or, or decision-making around COVID-19, whether it's about sports, whether it's about schools, whether it's about the town and businesses, is that, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. Um, we don't always have control because, you know, you know, the, a lot, you know, we, there's limits on what we can do based on what the state is doing and so forth. And I don't know that everybody always understands that what's in our control and what isn't in our control, either vis a vis the schools and the school committee or vis a vis the state. Um, and so, you know, I think, you know, I just for anybody really just to, you know, we're, we're, sometimes I guess it's just saying, you know, we're doing the best we can with the information that we have, but sometimes the information changes pretty quickly underneath us. Um, and in a way that's good because we're learning, you know, just like a lot less people who go to, who get COVID are dying now because we're, because the clinicians are learning. And in the same way, our policies are getting better. The quarantines are getting shorter because we're learning. You know, we're getting, maybe we have a lot less uncertainty now about risks in controlled environments like schools where there was a lot of uncertainty in the spring. Now we've learned a lot. Um, and so, you know, all those things mean that sometimes things change and it doesn't necessarily mean we're waffling. It just means we're learning, I guess.
Great. Well, I will see all of you on Friday for our.
Thank you all.
Can I say one more thing? Because you know I like to talk. I, I think it's really important, um, along those lines of, you know, just what a board does. Um, yeah, we met almost every week, you know, for months or every other week or whatever, and that's true. But, um, I just have to say that, uh, Christine is the person that had, and I'm, I'm really being candid, I work with four communities, public health directors, and I work around the state in other ways and collaborating. There's no bench, you know, you've all known me, Pete, Gus, Mike, I, I've lived almost 29 years, like Kathy, right? It's our, in our heart, right? I don't have an agenda or, we don't have a bench with staff for, for public health. I understand the restrictions, but when you look at comparable towns of, of size, say Westwood, a little bigger, the staff they have with a full-time health director and, and, you know, environmental health, I think a 30-hour nurse. So I take this opportunity when you ask, um, to keep that in mind that, of course, you have a board, but we're volunteers and we don't operationalize the hundreds and hundreds of guidance and orders that the governor has given. It's been Christine and Nick and the staff, you know, her staff, which most town managers don't do. Uh, I don't really know any. So I say that because, um, it's my hope and goal that, that you understand, um, and I know you do, uh, the insurmountable amount of work that Christine has had to do since March, operationalize and Bridget, uh, suite. And these are hard decisions, you all know, with businesses and closures and restrictions. So there's a lot of pushback and, um, really Christine has done, uh, as, as we've asked and we do to operationalize and do what the governor's orders and regulations under state of emergency have asked. So I just want to thank Christine and Nick because most towns have a lot deeper paid bench. And I will really now stop talking. So you can maybe think about, um, sometime somewhere, even if there's, you know, to build more of a bench because I just can't imagine how these Christine and Nick feel. And now we're into December. So thanks for indulging me.
Carol, thank you for that. I think that.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you.
Has a similar opinion. So thank you very much for the members of the Board of Health. We appreciate a lot what you guys are doing.
We'll see you on Friday.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Steve is and has QR codes. He's very high tech.
I wonder where you go when you click on that one.
Center for Health Decision Sciences. Um, next is.
What are you doing to get a QR code for yourself? This is cool.
I don't know. You, you Google it once, Google works again.
All right, let's see who's next.
Uh, James Goldstein and Friends of the Medfield Rail Trail Association to discuss rail trail insurance and a request for board of selectman approval of the environmental insurance policy. Hello, James. Thanks for coming again.
Yes, hello. Nice to be with you. Um, I believe Carl Touett from Twin Elms, who is the insurance broker who provided the town with the quotes, I believe is also on the line. Um, I think he's on the bottom of my screen. I don't know if that's Carl or not, but I think it is.
Okay. How does he spell his last name? So Chris can find him.
Uh, T O U E T, I believe.
Carl with a K.
I'm sorry?
Carl with a K.
Oh, oh, yes.
There we go.
Ah, okay. So that wasn't him, but I think he's joining now.
Yep, on now. Good evening, everybody. Hey, Nick.
James, Mr. Touett.
How are you?
So James, did you want to let us know what you're here about?
Sure, I will start. Um, as you know, we've been at the rail trail project for some time and there are two remaining issues, uh, before the town is able to sign the lease and then issue, uh, an IFD invitation for bids to actually construct the trail. One of them is the purchase of environmental insurance, which you will recall, that was one of the conditions of the, of the selectmen's approval, um, of the, uh, of the lease for the town administrator Christine to sign. The other remaining hurdle is the, uh, completion of the Conservation Commission's review of our request for determination of applicability. And as you well know, because it came through you, that, uh, uh, hearing, um, is having a second part this Thursday and we are hopeful that the commission will, um, uh, find what's called a negative determination, meaning, uh, they find the, the plans acceptable as it is, and they will designate where erosion controls have to happen and will move on. Uh, so in terms of this, uh, environmental insurance, um, policy, um, uh, Mr. Touett, um, represents Twin Elms, which is an insurance broker. And I believe it was, um, uh, Nick who reached out to Mr. Touett to get, uh, three quotes, which are required, um, uh, by the, the lease, I believe, uh, and, and the state in terms of contracting. Um, and those three quotes, I believe, were shared, uh, with you as well as a summary that Mr. Touett, um, provided. And, um, Nick had asked for a recommendation from the Friends of Medfield Rail Trail. I'm a member of that group, as you know. Uh, and so I provided him, uh, with an email, um, I think it was last Friday, um, with a recommendation, which I believe is in your packet as well. Uh, so I will just mention two or three points and then open it up for questions or for Mr. Touett to add, uh, something. The three quotes all meet the MBTA lease requirements, which is a five-year policy with certain, um, uh, minimum coverages and so forth. Um, the, uh, the three companies who issued these quotes are all either, um, rated A or A+, so very reputable insurance firms. And the main difference among the policy relates to exclusions of onsite pre-existing contaminants and then also, uh, the cost of the insurance for the five-year policy. You'll recall, I hope, from our, uh, previous presentations, um, and the material in our, uh, submission to the Conservation Commission, that, uh, we are committed to following, uh, Mass DEP's best management practices for controlling exposures to, uh, soil during the development of rail trails. That is the, uh, if you will, the, the state-of-the-art guidance from the state for exactly this kind of, of a project. And we provided, uh, those guidelines, the, the best management practices to the Conservation Commission, uh, that they will be in the construction, uh, invitation for bids. Uh, and so those, and, and, uh, they will be implemented through a construction manager who's also, um, uh, part of the project. So, um, uh, our recommendation, because we are following those best management practices and, uh, as I think we've described before, once the rails and ties are removed, we're adding six inches of, of gravel and then three inches of stone dust. So we're actually, um, improving or, or lessening any potential exposure once those surfaces are down and they will be put down in a very short, um, period of time after the rails and ties, uh, are, um, removed. Um, so our recommendation, because, we believe, uh, with the best management practices and the nine inches of additional surface, there's extremely low risk, um, uh, that the, uh, proposal, the insurance proposal from Great American, which is the, the one firm that's an A-plus firm, the other two are, are rated with As by the insurance industry, um, is the policy to buy. Uh, that is the least cost policy because of, um, different exclusions. Um, all of them exclude what are expected to be found there from, from normal railroad operations, um, uh, um, low levels of arsenic and hydrocarbons and so forth. Uh, um, so that cost is $20,814 for a five-year period and that includes a mandatory 4% Massachusetts, Massachusetts surplus, uh, line tax. Um, so that's our recommendation to the board. I believe you have all the policies as well as the summary table, um, and our recommendation in writing. So I don't know if Carl would like to add anything or do you want to start with, with questions?
Mr. Touett, did you have things to add?
Uh, no, James, James provided a very good summary of what, uh, is needed and what, um, would satisfy the lease with MBTA and protect the town.
Okay, Gus, do you want to have questions or comments?
Two, two questions. Uh, first one's not exactly insurance, James. Um, in my, and I'm doing this off the top of my head on recollection of past discussions. It seemed to me that there was a hundred thousand dollar grant that the rail trail committee got that expires at the end of this month.
Not the end of this month. That one has been extended through the end of 2021.
Okay.
If, if I may clarify another, that the more recent grant, um, does have to be expended by June 30th of 2021. So.
Okay. I was mostly worried about the status of something two weeks from now. Uh, and the second question I have, and this may be for you, Carl, uh, and it, and I, I, all, all day long, I've said, okay, you're going to ask another dumb question at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. So I understand this is a dumb question.
There's no dumb questions, Gus.
Well, so, so here's the backdrop. So the reason we're taking this insurance out is because the terms and conditions that the MBTA imposed was that basically we accepted unlimited, you know, we essentially assumed all liability for environmental issues. Uh, and then we got this loophole. If you carry this liability insurance for five years, then the indemnification goes away. So that's why we're doing what we're doing. The thing that confuses me is that if I look on the table at what is included, that sounds right. That's kind of like all the, you know, the stuff that's covered, uh, makes, you know, for five years, pre-existing and new conditions makes total sense. When I look at the exclusion, it sounds like it's excluding, it basically says all pollution conditions that's on, in soil and any railroad materials, et cetera, at or under covered location. That seemed to me to be what it was that we were indemnifying them against in the first place. So the exclusion looked like, I'm, I know it doesn't, it's just when I just read it, it sounds like the exclusion is taking out the very thing that we're carrying the current, the insurance to cover. So it's a dumb question. I'd love to be educated.
Yeah, no, no. Um, so the way the underwriters looked at this and, and the way that the, um, rail trails guidelines through the, uh, Mass DEP clean up costs. So the pollution legal liability, pollution legal liability policy is covering for pre-existing and new conditions. Um, the pre-existing conditions for cleanup in soil only. So Great American is excluding pollution conditions for cleanup onsite. So the on at or under is going to be the easement and the rail trail that you're buying. Anything offsite, uh, if, if there was a cleanup, uh, to a third party, that is not excluded. So this, it's a very net restricted exclusion, even though they're excluding everything that's pre-existing within the, the insured property, which is the easement. Um, you're getting coverage for offsite cleanup for the pre-existing and you're getting third-party bodily injury, third-party property damage. So if a homeowner, for some reason, found contamination that was coming from the rail, that would potentially be a claim and that would be something against the town Medfield and, and that would be covered. But anything within the course of the construction and, um, and again, like James said, the way that the construction is going to be, um, conducted, there's no removal of any soils and the DEP is not making, um, a town or any rail trail that's, that's been in the works to, to excavate anything because, you know, maybe there is something there, but it, it's not causing any issues. And if you're going to cap it, which is going to happen. So that was the variance in the different coverages between premium. Beasley had, you know, it was, it was more money. Um, they had a little less restriction. They didn't exclude everything, but they excluded the pretty much the known conditions that are going to be there. So in essence, it, it's, it is a little bit somewhat, some coverage that, that's granted, but it's an offset of cost. But if you don't have to do anything based on the guidance, then, and it does still satisfy the lease agreement where the lease said, you know, discovery of pollution conditions or migrating from the covered location. So it's neither or the way the lease reads. So, um, so they're, 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 but you're getting, you're, you're getting new condition coverage also. So in the course of the construction of the rail trail, if an event happened, say a contractor sprung a leak or they spilled, um, fuel oil, I mean, they, the contractor likely has that coverage that they carry. But if, again, if that caused it and the town was, had, had an issue, a new condition coverage on the property would be covered under this policy also. So it does protect the town.
And then last question, the, the $20,000, that's a premium for a five-year period of coverage?
Correct.
That's the full, got it.
That, that's the full premium for the five years for the three million. And the three million is your limit for the five years.
Okay, very good. That's all my questions.
If I may, I should have added one point, which is in my, um, written, um, email to Nick, which I think was shared with you. The, um, Friends of Medfield Rail Trail, uh, is going to transfer the required funds to purchase the, uh, the insurance.
Okay, great. Good for me.
Thank you, Gus. Mike, questions? Thank you, Gus. Mike, questions?
Gus covered it.
Okay, I'm okay, too.
All right. So I would move that we enter into the, or purchase the insurance policy as recommended.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Thanks for all the work you, you all are doing to put this together.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and congrats. It's, it's a nice, I've been involved with quite a few rail trails, and it's, it's a nice thing for the town and people. And so congrats and good luck with all.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for your work on this, James.
You're welcome, and I appreciate-
Oops, sorry.
We appreciate you too, James.
Get out.
For the record, Christine's the one who did that to you.
Right.
So our number five appointment-
We've got to get done in time for Christine, so she doesn't violate the curfew going home.
That's right, yeah.
Our next appointment is with Jeanne-
Video evidence.
To discuss UCC request to use the Medfield State Hospital for Easter 2021 and the Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Program grant application. Hi, Jeanne, thank you. Nice background.
I think this will be quick. Christine and Phil Bowman's on the line as well. He's our senior pastor. So we were gonna ask for, if we could, we being the United Church of Christ, if we could also use the state hospital front lawn property again. We used it five or six times this fall for fellowships on Sundays with small gatherings. And we'd like to reserve that space, if it's possible, for Easter Sunday coming, which would be April 4th. We asked for the morning hours of eight to noon. And of course, we'll follow the guidelines for COVID, whatever they may be at that point. I assume they'll, they'll shift again. But it was pretty successful with our, our fall gathering. So we'd like to plan for a spring one, if that's possible. John weighed in and didn't have an issue with it, but obviously it's up to the selectmen.
You're referring to John Thompson?
[laughing]
Right? That was a question.
Am I afraid of John?
No, no, are you referring, when you say John weighed in, John Thompson?
Yes.
Who's our chair of our Board Building and Grounds Committee at the hospital.
And then it came up, are you afraid of John, Jeanne?
John has been nothing but awesome this week. I-
Gus, any questions, comments?
No, this is, this sounds fine to me.
Okay, Mike? Mr. Markucci? Oh, you were freezing again.
Nope, I would move that we authorize- Can you hear me?
Barely, yeah, yeah. It's, it's garbled.
Make the motion, yes.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Peterson. Gus, Mr. Murby?
Hi.
Yeah, and yes, for me, too.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Go Army, beat Air Force.
And my, my second topic is around a grant application. So this is with, it's a state grant through the Department of Transportation. It's the Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant. I think the town got one in the fall with Sarah. It's the same kind of thing. It's a quick launch funding program. We're interested in doing a program up at the state hospital. The grant is due January 5th. It's for projects through May. And so I think what I would be asking you for is for Christine to authorize, or you to authorize Christine to sign it when we complete it, which we haven't drafted it yet, but we would do that. And essentially, the framework for that is around activation of the campus, but we're proposing a virtual activity. So it wouldn't be altering any of the physical spaces and would be an experience that you would have through your phone. And it won't kind of be a surprise, but that's as far as I want to go with it.
So is, is it the town that's not applying for the grant?
Correct.
Okay. Questions, Gus?
No, we backed Jeanne on all this stuff up till now. She must be a little mysterious on this one. I'm willing to go along with it.
Mike?
Nope, nothing for me.
All right, you win.
Thank you, everybody. Christine, I'll be in touch when it's ready for your review.
Thank you, Jeanne.
Thank you.
It didn't require a vote, just an expression of sentiment there?
I guess. All it is, everybody.
Thank you, Jeanne.
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Sherrill.
If it's going to be formally submitted, I think you need a formal vote to authorize Chris to sign.
All right. So we're not, we're not going to see the grant application again after this?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, you can simply authorize her and leave it to her discretion.
All right. Well, then I will, I will move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the application for the Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Program grant application.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Yep.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Our next agenda item is, we're into a discussion category, potential votes. It says, update on COVID-19 status slash operations and cares funding. Is that you, Chris?
That's me. So we're, two things. One, I showed this earlier, but I don't know if you saw, the Board of Health has new signs that you'll see going up around town. If you would like one for your front lawn, let us know. Those were paid out of cares, and we'll be putting them up. We're going to hold off until after the snowstorm on Thursday before we put them out. But if you'd like one, let me know. You'll see them around town. The other thing is, Nick and Donna are working with the school department on reconciling cares and FEMA. As you know, we have a deadline of December 30th to draw down the remainder of that money. So they're working on that right now. And that's all I have an update on, on cares at this point.
Okay. How about dog walking on Medfield State Hospital campus?
Yeah, I think, I think that's me, right, Christine?
That is you.
I, what, what prompted this? I asked Christine to add this one to the agenda. And what prompted this was a letter to the editor that Nancy Shod wrote that was published in last week's Hometown Weekly. She, along with some other Medfield residents, I gather, on a relatively routine basis, go up to the state hospital for exercise. I'm not sure how old they all, they all are, but I think she referred to her group as a group of seniors. So there's some people that are in their, I think, 70s and maybe even 80s that are walking there. She, she wrote, and if you didn't see it, she wrote an extremely benign, polite letter pleading with the state hospital dog walkers to keep their dogs under control. And, and generally speaking, that happens. But in this particular case, she related a day that they were walking inside the camp, on the campus, and apparently a fairly large dog came up behind, one of them jumped up on this lady, knocked her to the ground. And Nancy properly pointed out that when you have people that are in their 70s and 80s, it's not unusual for them to be on blood thinners. And it's not, and if, if somebody gets knocked to the ground and they crack their skull on the sidewalk, you know, if it's us, maybe it doesn't matter that we have a knot on our head. But if you're older, for one thing, you can get hurt more than just bleeding, but bleeding itself can be a very serious threat. And I, I read the letter. I was impressed by her, her measured comments. It was just a polite plea to dog walkers to not do that with their dogs. But when I read the letter, I said, no, this is, this is a more serious thing that I think the town should take action on, to not set up situations where dogs that are basically violating the rules, because a dog shouldn't be off the leash, off its leash unless it's under the positive control of an owner. When we have elderly people that are trying to get out there to get exercise, especially in a year like this, that are getting knocked to the ground, yeah, nobody got hurt this time, but that's a serious situation. So I reached out to John Thompson, and he's here. And I think we want to probably let him join in on this discussion and share his observations. I wanted it to bring it to our collective attention. I have a couple of thoughts about what we might do, but maybe we could hear first from John on what he sees on a daily basis up there.
Hi, John, you're on.
Hi, everybody. Well, I'll start out by saying that I actually had to fish a dog out of my truck today. So what happens is if I open the back of my SUV to get tools or materials, sometimes a dog runs up and jumps right into my car and ends up in the backseat looking for something. Now, we occasionally give the dogs a treat, and because we get to know a lot of them, a lot of them know us by sight. But what I've seen over the last, particularly in the last year with COVID coming into play, people walking dogs off-leash, talking with people while their dogs run and play with each other. Or I've also noticed that there's, there's some breeds now there that are these, these longer-range breeds, like Brittany Spaniels, Vizlas. These, these dogs need to run. They need to run like 100 yards away from their owners, and they'll circle around a building, and they'll run across the street and come back. And I have seen people knocked over. And it's a volume issue, too. There's an awful lot of people walking dogs there, particularly on a nice day like last Saturday. I, I will, Steve and I won't, won't even work there on the weekends now, for the most part, because of the volume of people and, and dog walkers. There is a lot of room in the back, as you know, behind the R building. There's, there's 10 acres back there. There's trails down to the river. There's both fields, A1 and A2 on either side of the hospital. And there's also a lot of open space across hospital road for people to walk dogs that need, need to run. So it, it is a concern. And, and part of the concern is the enforcement piece of it, because, you know, we can see this going on, but sometimes when a person's knocked over, the, the owner of the dog is not even in sight. You know, the, the dog comes around the corner from a building and just at full speed. A lot of them are young. There's puppies up there playing and running around. So yeah, I think it would, it'd be a significant enforcement piece, even if you want to put an overlay district on the hospital for requiring a leash. So there's space for off-leash walking up there if you, if you did want to entertain on-leash in the core campus and off-leash in the back. But I'll leave that up, up to you. All I can say is, it's, if you come, Gus, you're up there sometimes, and Pete, I know you're there almost every couple of days. And so you see that our parking lots are absolutely full on a nice day, and people wait to get a parking spot. And about half of those cars are people walking dogs, but then you've got a lot of, I've seen a real uptick in young families up there bringing kids. I mean, I saw a family sitting down to have a picnic up there on Saturday. So and then there's people pushing baby carriages, people pushing disabled people in the core campus now in wheelchairs. I've seen that as well. So it's just a very, very busy place. It's a lot different than it was five or six years ago when I started up there, and I was the only person walking around up there.
So I, and this is in the interest of brainstorming, this is only brainstorming, this is not a recommendation. But I, I had two thoughts, and I, I did share them with John. One is that maybe we should consider making the quad, inside the quad as a leash-only zone. So people that want to go run their dogs, there's plenty of room to do that, but not inside the quad. The second thought that I had is that we impose a reporting requirement. And, and the reporting would be, and, and the method to the madness here is if Pete, dog owners understand, if you have an incident with someone with your dog, you know, particularly if dog's off-leash, and it, and somebody gets knocked over, you have to report, you have to provide your name, your address, your dog's name, and a phone number contact. And, and it's, it would be like, in a, in a normal corporation, if you have an industrial accident, it's not an issue that it's anybody's fault. But it's an OSHA reportable accident, and we ought to have at least that same standard. Yeah, but the hospital, if that kind of an event occurs where somebody gets knocked over by accident, it ought to be reported. And I would probably extend it to dog, you know, if dogs get into altercations with other dogs, it ought to be reported. If a dog, if blood is drawn or a dog is injured, it should be reported. It doesn't mean you're going to get thrown off the campus. But it does get at the people like, like the, the owners of the dogs, that the, the pit bull that bit the captain of the Dover Sherborne Track Team, and the owners wouldn't come forward to let her know that their dog had a rabies certificate. So she had, she had to miss part of her season, and she had to go through a rabies series because the owners wouldn't act responsibly. And basically, then if we have problem dogs or problem owners, you kick, you ban them from the hospital. But mostly, it's to give people a little greater sense that they're going to be held accountable for how they handle their dogs.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sherrill, please.
All right. So, so we've been over this issue at other locations and under other jurisdictions. The starting point is, you've got a dog control statute, or I mean bylaw, where, which I guess Gus quoted at the beginning of this meeting, that the dog has to either be on the leash or under the, under the voice control of the owner. So that's a matter of enforcement, a bylaw that's on the books, and there's a penalty if you violate it. So there's, nobody has a right, frankly, to, to allow their dog to run free, even though I understand dogs like, you know, dogs need exercise, et cetera. It's, it's frankly not permitted on town property. So there's that. And then there's the, the further issue of prohibiting dogs completely. And in this case, in the cases that arisen in the past, we've simply, that also was an enforcement issue, and we therefore passed separate authorizing actions at town meeting, and in one case, gave Park and Rec the, the authorization to promulgate regulations with an enforceable penalty, and the Cemetery Commission as well, both being areas where they were having problems with people abusing the dog exercise-walking activities.
So Mark, let me ask you a question. We, I think I understand the bylaw, and, and part of the problem of enforcing that bylaw, when a dog can be off the leash under the positive control of an owner, is it's difficult to enforce a standard of positive control in any kind of, any meaningful way. Is, is there a reason why we couldn't just specify that inside the quad, all dogs have to be on a leash? It's kind, it's kind of like what the trustees do. There's certain places at Rocky Woods, your dog has to be on a leash. And there's other places where the dog can be off-leash if you have control of the dog. Is there a reason why we couldn't make it a leash-only area inside the quad?
It, it becomes a question, enforcing that regulation, if you do it, it's not going to have any teeth in it.
Well, so is there any-
But you need the town meeting to give you the effect of a bylaw, the authorization to do it, as was done with the Cemetery Commissioners and the Park and Rec Commissioners.
What, what I'm really trying to do here is adjust people. I'm not trying to do this through the teeth of law and enforcement. I'm trying to do it through the management of expectations. And with, and the teeth I'm looking for is a reporting requirement that, that basically gets people to take their responsibilities a little more seriously. I understand we could try to camp up with laws, then we can have police up there arresting or finding people. But I'm trying to get at this a little bit differently than that. If we just said you have to be on a leash inside the quad and you have to report things-
Unfortunately, the problem with dogs is their owners. In my lengthy practice and involvement with, with dog cases in different contexts, it's not, you know, dog trainers will tell you it's, it's the owners, it's not the dogs. I don't know if you can say that broadly, but more often than not, that's the case.
Well, Mark, I don't think Gus' suggestion that dogs have to report anything.
And incidentally, it's covered by homeowners. If a dog causes injury or damage, it comes under a homeowner's policy as far as a claim goes.
Well, Gus, are you basically looking to put up a sign and designate the areas as two different ways?
Yeah.
And have, have sort of a, I mean, I think Mark's getting at, you, you could have a reporting requirement. If it's not an enforceable bylaw, people who are going to report it anyway will report it because they're good citizens. Those who are not going to report it anyway aren't going to report it. People who are going to report it anyway will report it because they're good citizens. Those who are not going to report it anyway aren't going to report it. But maybe there's some hortatory effect of having the sign up, having the designation, telling people they have to do this.
There's no downside as long as you understand what, exactly what Mike just said.
Well, yeah. And I think the thing we're trying to do is to not prevent people who want to walk their dogs up there from walking their dogs up there. But I also think we don't want to prevent people who just want, especially elderly people who just want to walk up there and get fresh air and exercise from feeling like they can't go there because the people with the dogs might present them with a problem. I do have a question. If the reporting requirement was in place and if there was a habitually irresponsible dog owner with a habitually problematic dog, would the town be able to ban that particular person and dog from the property?
It almost begs the question because it all gets back to identifying the owner and the dog. If you can identify them, we've got a very broad vicious and nuisance dog bylaw which supplements the state statute, which also addresses vicious and nuisance dog. And it goes beyond bite. So if you've got a dog that knocks down because they haven't been properly trained or what have you, that falls at least arguably within the ambit of both the statute and the regs, particularly if it's going on on a habitual basis. But it's all a matter of being able to identify the owner to take some action.
What I'm really trying to do here is to get owners to realize, wait a minute, if my dog causes a problem, I have to give someone my name, my address, my dog's name and my phone number. Maybe I ought to be more responsible about how I control my dog. And so I'm not really trying to get people in trouble. I'm not trying to kick dogs completely off the site. I'm trying to basically reduce the number of unwanted incidents between dogs and people who don't really want contact with those dogs.
Well, that's why I said there's no downside per se to putting up signage that says that. And, you know, maybe, maybe it'll benefit something. But the other thing would be increased patrols, police patrols or what other other town employees to intercede and educate people in what they can and can't do. I'm just, as an aside, but I'm guessing you're not getting 100% compliance with pooper-scooper pickup up there either.
Nor with mask wearing.
Yeah, yeah, that too, I'm sure.
Well, in fairness to dog owners, you know, John, you mentioned Vislas. But I, my perception at least is the Viswiz group that goes up there. A, they, they have a large, a good number of, you know, energetic dogs, but they seem to keep, every time I've been there, they, the dogs are nice dogs, they handle it well. And I know there's been times when the Viswiz group has come and policed the entire campus. So they're, I'm not trying to trash dog owners by any means. There are some groups that are, I'd like to keep things open for groups like that that are responsible. I just think that inside the quad, maybe the, maybe in light of your comments about the level at which the hospital is being used, it might be more appropriate to put in a leash requirement on dogs that are inside the quad.
And don't forget, a lot of the people are from out of town now. The percentage of people driving up here to walk at the hospital has really increased. People from quite far away will drive an hour to come and walk their dog here.
Wow.
Yeah.
So I'll share my experience, which was, because I go jogging there on weekends. And in the past month or two, I got actually a dog bit me. It tried to take a hunk out of me, but it only got my shorts.
Yeah.
And so that when you're moving like that, the dogs are curious and most of them just come up and want to be friendly and say hello. But this one tried to take a piece out of me. I, I think it's, it sounds like a good idea, Gus, to have it, every dog should be on a leash inside the quadrangle. I would question whether or not we should be looking at something about having a, some sort of permit to walk dogs on the property at all. So we can better keep track of who's there. I mean, I commented to John when I saw him last weekend that the town could be making a fortune just from charging two bucks for parking. There were so many cars there.
Yeah. Yeah, it fills up.
Any thoughts, Mike?
Not really, no. And I'm happy to consider something, some proposal that's realistic. I don't want to give more, realistically speaking, we're not going to be able to increase enforcement all that much if we're already not enforcing the leash law. So I am happy to put a sign up. I'm happy to do what we can to make it safer for people up there. I mean, it's always the challenge of, this isn't something that government should have to be involved in at all. People who own dogs should act responsibly and control them and all the rest of it. But we know they won't and they don't. And so, you know, I don't want to create unrealistic expectations about what we're going to be able to police and how we're going to be able to manage the dog walkers and regulate the dog walkers up there. But I think if there's some, if there's a reasonable proposal on signage and maybe, you know, some, some rules or whatever you call it, kind of a, some guidance on where we want people to do stuff and report things. I mean, I think that's probably the best we can, the best we can do. So I'm open to considering a concrete proposal.
So if John, if John endorses this idea, I defer to John's insight here because he spends more time up there than I do. But my suggestion would be that we try putting, putting in place signs that indicate that inside the quad, all dogs have to be on a leash. And that will be a change from what people understand. And that we also put up a sign, I can help try to write it, John, if you want. Put up a sign that basically announces there's a reporting, basically all incidents involving dogs and especially with people, but also, you know, incidents between dogs. They need to be reported. We probably, I guess it would probably go to the animal control officer.
Yeah, Jenny.
And the hope there isn't, it's not first and foremost that we have an enforceable regime. It's that those two things would cause people to take their responsibilities to control their dogs a little more seriously. If that doesn't work, if we still have just blatant disregard, then I would say then the next step is to go to Pete's suggestion and basically make it a permit-only site for dogs. And force, basically you have to have a permit to be up there.
Right.
Does that seem reasonable, John?
Yeah, why don't we work on the language of a sign? And we certainly already have places where we know people are coming in and we could mount the signs. So they're visible when, when people come in and park and, and, you know, we're concerned about safety in these parking lots because a lot of people, the people that have walked there a long time know that you should keep your dog leashed in the lot. But some people, I mean, these dogs are running full speed. Pete, you've probably seen this. They run full speed around those parking lots. Their cars are actually moving and that's picked up a lot, too.
Well, I suggest we give that a try and see if it improves the situation.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
I don't know that that requires a vote as long as there's no objection, but.
I'll just share my, my experience from many years ago when the selectman ordered signs put up on the town land up around McCarthy Park that had to do with no dogs and no, I don't remember what else it was, but the signs just got very quickly stolen.
Yeah.
On the other hand, Pete, you and, this was before I became a selectman, when I, I registered to complain about the dogs walking through Vine Lake Cemetery. Those signs went up and I think there's been very rare violations of that since. So it took there.
Yeah. No, I think the signs are a good idea, Gus.
Yeah, we'll vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sherrell.
I mean, I'll just toss this out, which is the flip side. And that's my experience both here as a resident in Medway and in Franklin as a town attorney. Both have dog parks which were developed by private groups who also regulate their usage. And because of that, and the consequences of problems arise and the groups are fairly strict in their regulation. And I've heard of no problems in either location.
There are a couple of comments in the chat that I was just looking at. One of those was from a neighbor who says that the dogs come over and bother his neighbor's chickens from the, from the hospital dog walkers and so.
Bill Mazzaro has registered a comment that he objects, but I'm not sure which part of the discussion he objects to.
What do you got?
Hold on. Hi, Bill.
Oh, he took too long to get on. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Hi, I just, just wanted to say, so I've actually had to chase dogs away from the neighbor's chickens, trying to get in and kill the chickens several times here. And, you know, I'm a dog owner. You know, I've been, you know, I've rescued dogs. I love the idea of being able to walk somewhere off-leash or anything else. But you just have to keep in mind that there are many houses that have bought the hospital property in the back. And the dogs come over the wall. Now, one time I was very happy to see the dogs come over the wall because the hounds during one of the fox hunts came over the wall. So I was thrilled to see that. But I'm not thrilled to see the other dogs come over. And I can't tell you how many times, I hate to complain, but how many times I see here and I listen to people yelling Rover, no, come Rover, 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 over and over and over again for hours. Now, I'm sure that person would tell you that Rover was under his control. But I got news for you, Rover's not. So before you open blanketly the property in the back for, you know, free range running of dogs and everything else, you need to consider that those dogs are not under control, that there are homes that live alongside there. And at the very least, the residents should be able to decide what you do up there.
Well, I think, Bill, we're not, we're not talking about overriding the existing rule. It sounds like an added restriction where you can't be off-leash law regardless of whether you claim voice control within the quad. And then the current status quo would exist in the back behind the R building.
Well, the issue is still control. There is very little control off-leash for the majority of the dog walkers up there. We're not talking about, you know, trained dogs. We're not talking about sheepdogs that you can whistle and get them to go to the left or right. I hate to make a fuss over this, but I mean, it's, it's really chaos if you listen to what's going on in the back up here.
I think that's got to be a broader discussion if we're going to have some sort of regulation that we're looking to enforce to limit that in the back. And I think if we're going to do that, we've got to specifically put on the, an agenda that we're going to talk about an additional regulation. This is the text of the regulation. I think Peter was talking about.
Yes, I would just ask you to keep in mind that there are other areas that can have issues with dogs running loose than just at the core campus.
So, no, that's fair. But Bill, the two, the action of putting in this reporting requirement would give you an option when a dog does that. That's a reportable incident.
Well, the last chicken, the last chicken incident that we had here, the dog came over the wall, through the woods, chased the dog away. I followed the dog out to the back.
Yep.
And the people that were there had four other dogs with them. They were walking their neighbor's dogs and everything else. And I, and I'm, I also have had some experience, and John will mention this. When he had the first building and grounds committee, he had several dog walkers that were there. And the dog walkers were actually afraid to challenge, these were women who were afraid to challenge men who were walking dogs up there who were, you know, not under their control. So you would talk about enforcement, you need somebody up there besides a civilian who's going to go up to somebody and say, tell me the name, you know, give me your name, give me your address, I'm going to report your dog. So you have to think this through, guys. This is not something you're going to just throw up a sign and solve a problem.
Yeah. Well, that's where the permitting would get you some, somewhere because you'd then have some sort of certifications that you could check back on the people. So if you know which car the dog came in, then you could figure out who it is. There are a lot of professional dog, people who charge for dog walking, who I guess are professional dog walkers that are using the place, too.
Yeah.
But I don't know, that's our primary concern, particularly if they're not from town, but, I mean.
They bring, they bring a gaggle of dogs at a time. That's the problem.
All I'm trying to do is, I mean, these are discussions we've had in one form or another for years. I'm trying to figure out some reasonably simple, straightforward efforts to start to tighten a couple of screws down that I hope will eliminate a lot of the problem. If it doesn't eliminate all the problem, then okay, then we can talk about more. But the option of doing nothing is kind of what we keep defaulting to. And the option of taking the entire piece of property and putting, you know, putting a rule in that says all dogs have to be on leashes everywhere is at least, I think, an overreaction at this point. So I'm just trying to move the, move the needle a little bit here.
Yeah, I think that, I think that we've agreed.
Go ahead, Pete.
I think that we've agreed that we will go the sign route, but it's just a question of, I think if we want to address Bill Mazzaro's issue, that then we should have a further discussion about that. At some time, maybe he and John can come up with something.
Yeah, Jenny's been coming up more frequently and that's been a help. I don't know if she comes down in the back here by where Bill's house is, you know, in the backfield behind the R building. But I can talk to her about that. She is patrolling up here. I think she comes up every day now, actually. I have seen her a lot more. So, and that's, that's, that can only help to have her around.
And over the wall from Bill's house, actually, maybe Dover.
No, 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 no.
Four houses up. Thanks for the opportunity to have the conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we seem to have a consensus about doing some signage. So let's go ahead and do that then.
We'll do that. Yep, okay.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Christine. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Take care, John. So I see the next issue is reissue Hinckley South RFP for senior ownership, 40B. That's next to my home, so I should recuse myself. So maybe.
So Mike, I think through the Affordable Housing Trust, you, I think, initiated this. My, I'm quite happy to have it get reissued. I will repeat the same criticism I had of what we did the first time. This is an RFP that has both the technical approach that the developer will take and the price that the developer will pay for the land is both open variables. I was skeptical the developers would respond to a two-dimensional, you know, RFP like this. Because if I, if I looked at it as a developer, I'd either want to know, so do you want me to give you the most money I possibly can for the land and then I can do what I want? Or do you have an idea of what you want and you're not really concerned about, you know, the money is a secondary consideration? I don't know how to put a competitive proposal in because I don't really know what you really want me to be competing on. So if you want to put it out this way, I'm fine with that. I still have that same technical criticism of the way the RFP is structured.
So how would you change it?
I would, I would either specify a price for the land and then say, tell us what you do. You buy the land for this amount of money, tell us what you'd put on it. Or I would basically say, listen, what we're looking for is a developer to put in, you know, between 15 and 20 units or whatever the right number is. And this is, the parameters are fine in terms of what the units should be sized like. Tell us what you would do and tell us what you'd pay us for the property to do it. So you either lock in the scope or you lock in the price.
Well, I mean, we can't lock in the price, right? Because you've got to bid on it. So we can't say the price is 50,000.
Sell it for, sell it for a specified price and what you're competing on is the proposal from the developer, what they would do.
And what happens if two people say the same thing? Well, that, I mean, as it's set up right now, as it's set up right now, Jim is on, instead of right now, 50% of the score, and this is done, this is the way you do these RFPs. 50% of the score is the proposal, right? I'm just trying to find the number. 50% of the score is how close you are to what we're suggesting. And 20% is the price and 30% is the qualifications of the developer.
Yeah. And I'm saying, I'm saying when both price and scope are as open-ended as these are, that's a poorly constructed RFP.
All right. Well, I mean, why don't you mark it up? Because I don't see it as open-ended as all. I mean, because it's 20 to 30 units, it defines what the kind of units are going to be. And it basically says if two people come in with the exact same units according to what I think are pretty specific. I think the problem is it's too specific, frankly. But if they come in as the same, then the price is the variable.
Can I enter one second? I wanted to just say that the version that the committee used for this round was Gus's mark. Can I interrupt one second? I wanted to to say that the version that the committee uh used for this round was Gus's marked up version. And uh we used Gus's points on the sale price and the uh unit price um as a basis of the committee's discussion at their last meeting. And they opted through discussion to keep those uh pieces the same for the reasons that.
So that's why I like, that's why I like this, the details around the specification, the units better this time. If if that's what you did, and if the real issue is the prices, or really wanna know what people would would pay to do it. I would be more specific on how many units we want.
Yeah, there's a big variable because the cost to extend the utilities um is is an unknown. So um so that was part of the reason why we're looking toward the developer to do their pro forma. And let us know that they can meet the desired prices, close to the desired prices for seniors. Because we know that we, the committee, actually increased them based on what their preference was in the senior study. And um, you know, the most money that the town can get from it. So it is a balancing.
Yeah, so you know, I do wanna, you know, emphasize that we did talk through your comments that that were in in the um the last revision, you know. And we and we do have um, you know, folks who are involved in the development community on there. And we talked about, you know, if you if you lock down too many of the dials, right, for them to turn, right? Then you may box them into a corner that that they may not wanna respond. So if they, if they get to to turn the dial of units, right? And then turn the other dial of of uh payment for the property, they may come back actually with a better proposal, you know. And actually um kind of fine tune where they're gonna, you know, in in the end, it's their profit too, right? So they fine tune where their profit comes from.
Yeah. So so first off, if you're getting advice from people who are developers who are saying this, I would listen to their advice more than mine. I I have a lot of experience in contracts, but not in real, real estate development. So I'm looking at this as a contract that has these two dials you're talking about. And if, in the world I come from, if I were trying to compete on that kind of solicitation, I would say, I'm not really sure what these people really want. Do you want the best price for the land? Or do you want the best buildings and prices in such a big deal? I can look at the twenty percent and say, oh, you want the best buildings, but I'm not sure if I would. Speaking for myself as an unqualified person, unqualified in real estate development, I would look at that and say, ah, it's way too much risk to invest in a proposal when I'm not sure if I know how to play the game the right way.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable that this is actually a scope that is more likely to be attractive to developers, I already said, I'm happy to have this go out again. I just was worried that with those two dials and those two dimensions being left open in the experience that I've come from, which is not real estate development, that would be a detraction from the kind of competition that I would go after for an RFP. It's like, I gotta know, is it low cost or is it best, you know, is it best, best proposal, highest quality, or is it low cost?
Yeah, yeah, I just came out of a conversation with a a group in Seattle. And this, you know, a similar kind of thing came up, you know, at our Seattle, Seattle campus. And um, you know, really, the the advice from the real estate community was, you know, you you gotta keep a couple of these variables open related to that scenario, right? And it's not exactly the same scenario, but it's the same concept.
Okay, I I will pull, I will pull back my concerns. I am fine having this reissued, and I look forward to the proposals we get.
Do you, I, you wanna vote to reissue that?
Yeah, so I I would move that we reissue the RFP for the Hinckley South property. Uh to reissue the RFP concluded within our meeting materials and according to the schedule uh laid out uh in that proposed.
Second.
Mr. Murby.
Hi.
Mr. Markucci. I and Mr. Peterson is recused.
Yep, okay. And the and the timeframe for this is this, this process would play out before we would get to a town meeting. So the article that's up that we're gonna talk about next is only applicable if we don't get a response.
A response that you are favorable to. So you could get a response, but not one before with it. Yes.
Great.
So.
Also wanna recognize that the second member of the Newton household is on the line here also. So I know uh we had the first member of the Newton household on during the COVID conversation, so.
We're also known as Thompsons. You have the better half at the beginning.
Okay.
Okay, so I I suppose Pete's still recused from the the second portion of the discussion then.
Yep. He's probably out ordering a pizza or something while we.
He's not coming back for, he's gonna recuse himself from the rest of this meeting, I think.
I knew it.
So, so yes, too. Um so Gus had mentioned, um so we're also proposing concurrently to move forward with a um warrant article for town meeting twenty twenty one in May that would uh broaden the authorization for disposition to include multifamily um housing, multifamily rental, senior housing. So it would be in the style of what was proposed um on Pound Street, the Rose Bay project. Um so the the ownership one that was previously approved was, is in the style of Turtle Brook, just for um visuals. Um and if we don't get any good proposals, um then we would ask town meeting to support broadening that article or um authorization.
So on Hinckley South, um first off, I, so I I like what you just said, Sarah. I, the Pound Street project, speaking personally, the Pound Street project, whether it's in the right location on Pound Street or not. The basic concept of that project, I, as I went through the details, I personally liked. I thought it would be, uh it represented housing that some seniors in town would really enjoy having. Pete, if you're there, the the only issue I have on this one is is the number of units. Um and Pete, Pete, if you're there, I'm gonna ask you a question not as a selectman, but as a resident of Medfield, which I believe you are allowed to comment on. Mark, am I correct in that? Pete can comment as a resident, correct?
He's, if he's the homeowner, if, and I, you know.
Yes, he is. And I, and I'm inviting him to, I'm inviting him to comment if he would like on the number of units. So in other words, the Pound Street project is forty five units. It was proposed for two point three acres. I have no doubt that forty five units on Hinckley South is gonna be fine. This, if I'm reading it correctly, uh is, uh where did I see it?
About four upwind.
What was, you know, why did I see, I saw it, so it was.
It was in the RFP in the um.
No, no, for the, what are the number of units that are contemplated for this?
Oh, forty five.
It's only forty five? Okay. Then Pete, you don't have to come on. I like the, I like the project. For some reason, I I maybe I was reading the number of units that exist or something, although I.
Oh, yeah, the summary of um the existing rental and ownership units that are coming.
It's up to fifty. The article is drafted, it's up to fifty.
That's, that's fine. That's fine. I, I, for some reason in my head, I had, I had ratcheted it up high. And it must have been that I glanced at the front page, saw the hundred twelve units and said, wait, but this is a different thing. But, okay, I, Pete, you can go back to eating. Uh, we're good.
Didn't look like he was in interrupting uh that for your summons, Gus.
The short answer is I'm absolutely in favor of this article. If if the first, if the reissuance of the RFP doesn't work, I would absolutely be in favor of this article uh pursuing it, because I think, I I think this concept um would be attractive to some number of seniors in town. Want me to talk about the second article?
Uh, yeah, so the second article, I'll introduce that. So that is Hinckley North, and that's considered the Harding Street portion of um the Hinckley property, which does extend between Ice House Road area and Harding Street. There is a twenty foot wide access point off of uh Harding Street, which makes it a little bit, that and the fact that um even though it's approximately uh four acres, there's some wetland slopes and ledge there. Makes it harder to develop that site. So um while the trust has been having a lot of conversations about locating a group home, something along the lines that doesn't require a lot of land to build and a lot of intensive use and neighborhood disruption, uh that could be a decent site if we were able to work with a group home developer um for it. So the notion is to pursue authorization for disposition for that purpose. While we can, while the trust endeavors to find that um type of group home that can do the build and the operations.
So this article, as I think Mike already knows, I'm not in favor of. There, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, I'm not convinced that that particular location is a great place for a group home. Uh number two, we've had discussions in town over the years of the possibility of of ho, of looking to acquire adjacent land to give us actually a bigger site to work with on something that could possibly be uh senior housing or something like that, if it turns out we need it. With regard to the group home, one of the other reasons I'm not on board with this is that right now, the development up at the state hospital includes the development of a group home. Uh and so what we'll have is a group home at the state hospital, a group home on Hospital Road, a group home at the end of Hospital Road, if if those all happened. And I'm not sure, or we build a group home here, and then we would, as we have with with our affordable housing, get to the point of developing the state hospital property and say, well, we don't actually need affordable housing, because we've already met our forty B requirement. We don't actually need a group home, because we've already put the group home in other places that probably weren't as attractive. Uh and so I'm actually concerned that all of the targeted purposes for the state hospital, we're losing some of those. Uh but the one that I think, if I were gonna put a group home up there, I would put it on the state hospital campus. I wouldn't put it behind a bunch of homes uh off a hospital road.
Yeah, we're certainly not looking to um m- make, I I think what the are, the intent of this article is, is to create the possibility of exploring what the potential of that site is. Um, because, you know, when we look at town owned land, there's not a lot of town owned land that's usable for very many purposes. So.
Huge amount. It's all up at the state hospitals, Sarah.
I, I, Gus, I'm, hey, I'm on board with moving forward with that. But, you know, when we're talking, we can't talk to um the group home developers and say, there's going to be in, you know, X number of years, potentially the space to do that. Um because really what they're just doing is looking at um the MLSs and looking at um available parcels of town owned land. There's no other town owned land that I think that we could, at this point, um at least explore authorization for disposition. I'm not saying this is the site for a group home, but we can't even talk to group home developers about potentially exploring this site um because it's not on the table.
Why can't you talk to them about, and the reason you can't talk to them about this hospital is what?
Well, I'm less inclined to talk to a developer about the state hospital with um even more question marks surrounding that than I am about the Hinckley property.
Well, I don't understand what you just said.
Uh, having a conversation with a regional group home developer about potentially citing a group home at the state hospital is not an easy conversation to have. But I mean, because there's so many things that need to happen before.
Well, there there's an RFP that we're targeting to come out at the beginning of this next year.
But it, but that involve, but but a single group home developer is not gonna respond to the RFP.
Sure, they they would be up, they'd probably be part of, but but the developer up at the state hospital would be interested in having a group home developer develop the group home that the master plan said we should put in up there.
Okay.
Well, there is, there is another aspect to this. There is another aspect to this, that, you know, we're in safe harbor through May of twenty twenty two. And we have, you know, a development at Pound Street that may or may not be successful, right? So we need to continue to make progress.
Right.
And and getting units, um, you know.
And that's why the fallback on Hinckley, Hinckley North, uh I'm sorry, Hinckley South, basically, that's the project. If it doesn't go in at Pound Street, that's the project that would be the Pound Street project that would put us over the ten percent.
It it would, but there's no guarantee that we would get a successful bidder for that, right? So we still need to hit the mark by that date. Uh and we gotta, you know, keep, you know, in addition to pursuing those, those individual projects, we we have to make smaller incremental projects wherever we can, both on the group home and and on the, you know.
Can I offer a suggestion on this here?
Yep.
And this is just, so this is, and obviously, it's it's December fifteenth. Um I don't think the warrant for a town meeting has even opened yet. Um the trial, the town charter, the trust can put this article on the town meeting warrant if it wants to. I mean, I'm gonna suggest that this is, this obviously implicates a number of different uh projects and and some broader strategic questions that we tabled this particular discussion substantively uh until we can put it on an agenda where it has a little more time for people can, you know, look at the different moving pieces and we can address some of these different parts. Because I don't, there's not, there's nothing for us to decide about this tonight. I mean, I know it's under discussion, possible votes, but we haven't opened the warrant. They're not asking for a position with the selectmen on it yet. I I would suggest that we we do this a different time.
I'm good, I'm good with that. The good, the good news in this discussion is I'm completely on board with the strategy you're pursuing for Hinckley South. So let's, at least, at the very least, we're good to go on that one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good. Looks like poor Mo. We should have moved Mo up. Is he there? He's still there.
He's coming.
Our next item is uh action items, contract with E.L. Harvey and Sons to provide recycling box rentals on the hauling of and trucking of single stream recycling from the midfield transfer station.
I'm all good, Gus. Thanks for asking. It's been very interesting so far.
There, well, anything, anything's better than a blizzard.
That's coming. So the Yale Harvey contract is our annual uh contract for the disposal of our single stream recycling. Um so it's, um, I think we have a fair price for this year. It's only till, um, it'll expire next December thirty first. Um where we're gonna be looking into going into possibly a consortium to uh get lower pricing. But for right now, we have to uh get this contract in for the next, the next calendar year.
Any questions, Gus, Mike?
Gus is trying to talk.
You're on mute.
I thought I'd click myself off. You got him down to the ninety dollars, Mo?
Yes, uh he was asking for ninety five. I kinda talked him down to ninety and uh explaining that we're in, you know, in tough times, and I think uh I reached his emotional side this year.
It looks, it looks fine to me.
All right. Well, I would move that we approve the contract with E.L. Harvey and Sons to provide recycling box rentals, hauling and trucking of single stream recycling at the transfer station consistent with the proposal uh in the material submitted.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby.
Yep.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
And then we've got the contract with Ingersoll Rand due to furnish a forty horsepower rotary screw air compressor for the wastewater treatment plant.
So this contract is uh is an operational contract. We have an air compressor that runs our Dyna Sand filtration system. Uh that's a necessary component of the wastewater treatment plant, and it's on a backup compressor right now. So it's imperative that we replace that as soon as possible.
I find Ingersoll Rand to be one of the better uh screw air compressors out there, so I think it's a really good choice. It's uh, that's, I, that's where I always turn when I need one of these babies. So it's, it's a good idea. I'm all, all for it, especially the variable ones. The variable ones are great.
Just the one that comes with the optional little bike wheel, bike tire inflation stand for the.
They'll make you a cup of coffee too, Gus.
Looked, looked good to me.
So I would have moved that we approve the contract with Ingersoll Rand for the rotary screw air compressor consistent with the bid submitted with our materials.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Next item is the, uh, let's see, approved bid awards for the Southeast Regional Services Group, DPW Services Award, February 21, 2021 to January 31, 2022.
So these are our, our regional consortium. There's 29, 30 towns in this consortium that we go out for DPW services, supplies, office supplies, paper, drug and alcohol testing all come out of this consortium. This happens to be for the services, for, for paving, anywhere from paving to installation of guardrails to tub grinding, to sidewalk installation. So we put in quantities every year and it takes the procurement is taking care of the Southeastern Regional Services Group Administrator.
Any questions from Mo?
No questions.
How about a motion then?
I would move that we approve the bid awards for the Southeastern Regional Services Group for the period February 1st, 2021 to January 31st, 2022, according to the Price Chapter B 30 quotation form submitted with our meeting materials.
And, and you usually award the contract with allowing me to sign the contracts, if that's okay with you guys?
And then that motion to authorize DPW Director Maurice Collet to sign the contract on behalf of the town.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby.
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye.
Thanks, Mo.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. Have a great holiday if I don't talk to you.
Oh, you too.
Get a good night's sleep, Mo.
I will.
Next is approved Massachusetts COVID-19 Vaccine Program Agreement.
So this is a standard agreement that the town signs every year. We haven't done it in the last few years. We usually do it. You've signed it before in the past in terms of flu vaccines. By signing this, this does not mean that we are going to get the COVID vaccine in order for the town to be distributing. However, the Department of Public Health has asked all public health departments to have this ready to go, just in case they do decide they would like local boards of health to have the vaccine ready to go. We currently don't know if we have the proper equipment in order to store the vaccine, so all of that will be taken into consideration at a later date. They still ask that the form be filled out before they make any of those decisions.
And they being the, the State Board of Health?
The Department, yeah, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So if you can authorize me to sign it, Nancy and I will work on completing it and getting it submitted to the Public Health Department.
So two, two questions. You, you answered one of them, which is, do we have the equipment? The, this first one, who's our chief medical officer?
So we don't have a chief medical officer. I talked to Nancy about that, and apparently this form is used for everybody. It's a one size fit all. So we actually don't have the medical officer and we never fill out that portion of the form. We only fill out the fiduciary responsibility of the form.
Okay.
If we did, as the town, receive COVID vaccines to give out, then we would be working with our public health nurse, which you heard earlier, is the local Natick VNA, and they would help us distribute the vaccines through that.
Okay, then my, then my other question, my, my question's an observation. This is pretty much a blank form. So what we're, all we're doing is we're, we're approving the idea that we're going to fill this form out and submit it. It's not that we're, we're not approving any information on this form. It's just that we're approving the act of filling this form out and submitting it. Okay, got it?
It doesn't look like there's a lot of room for negotiation or creative writing in this particular, in this particular form. So I, I would move that we authorize Christine Truylor to fill out and submit the Massachusetts COVID-19 Vaccine Program Agreement.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby.
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye.
Okay.
Okay, our next item is Conservation Commission Appointment Clarification.
So I will tell you that I was so excited that we had two people who wanted to join the Conservation Commission that when I presented them to you last week, I reversed them. And I made Catherine the full member instead of the associate member. So this is just a clarification that Kirsten Pollard will be the full voting member of the commission and Catherine Scott will be the associate member.
All right. Well, I will move that we appoint.
Before that, could I just interject? I had a discussion with my in-house Concom member, and she tells me that no one at the Concom, including Leslie, has ever heard of Catherine Scott and, and would ask that we not appoint her until she makes herself known to the Conservation Commission.
Who submitted, who submitted her name?
Catherine Scott submitted it directly to me that she was interested in being associate member on the Conservation Commission. She'd actually wanted to be on several appointments and then given her background, conservation seemed to be the most interesting. But I'll talk to Catherine tomorrow and have her reach out to conservation and go to a meeting first.
Yeah, good. I, I would think as a general rule, maybe it doesn't have to be a hard and fast rule, but if we have, I, I kind of assume when we have names coming to us, that we're, they're coming to us with the endorsement of the committee that they're hoping to join.
I, I thought Catherine had reached out to them, so I will, I will follow up. I misunderstood when I spoke the other day.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd love to have her if she'd reach out to them.
Yep, I'll have, I'll put Catherine in touch with her.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sorel.
So from what I'm hearing, my recommendation would be to rescind the prior vote and replace it with a new vote.
Yes, excellent. Thank you. Do we have a motion then?
Can we do that, Mark, based on what's in our agenda here, or do we have to actually put on the agenda that we're rescinding a prior appointment?
No, I think he wants you to rescind the vote you just took.
No, I want you to rescind the vote from last week that was wrong and replace it with this.
Is our, is our, is our agenda sufficient to be able to do that, Mark?
Well, I mean, the, the practical effect, as far as the full member, everybody seems to be, yeah, I, as long as the, 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 the people involved have been informed that it was at least going to flip between the full member and the associate member. So they know about that. It's just to, so that there isn't inconsistency in the votes. Otherwise, you're going to have two inconsistent votes in the record.
All right. Well, then I, I will move that we rescind our appointment of Kirsten Pollard as an associate member of the commission and rescind our appointment of Catherine Scott as a full member of the Conservation Commission.
Okay. All right. Before I second that, then is your intention to have a second vote?
Second motion, filling in the appointment.
Okay, second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby.
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye. And then I will move that we appoint Kirsten Pollard as a full voting member of the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Murby.
Yes, indeed.
And Mr. Markucci, aye. And it will anticipate putting Ms. Scott back on the agenda once she's had a chance to speak to the Conservation Commission members.
And I think it would be appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to send their compliments to Selectman Peterson's in-house Concom member who spotted the discrepancy.
Our next item is the Midfield Energy Committee members seek the appointment confirmation, appointing Robert Winograd, Patricia Pembroke, and David Stevenson to the Energy Committee.
I would move that we appoint Robert Winograd, Patricia Pembroke, and David Stevens to the Medfield, David Stevenson to the Midfield Energy Committee.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
And then the next item is Midfield Energy Committee and New Ecology, which is a consultant.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are requesting access to the Midfield State Hospital buildings. New Ecology is, is, and the Energy Committee are working on assisting the Development Committee and language for the RFP related to energy issues. And apparently it is important that they get access to the building to be able to draft those suggested terms.
So I would, I would simply to add to the picture, I noticed an email came in from Bill Masaro questioning the particular buildings. I think they were, I think this applies to this, that they were looking to look at. So given them access is no problem, but I, I believe there's some further work that needs to be done in what they're targeting.
The, the, the request that I saw just had to do with wanting a representative building and somebody had already taken measurements, Jim Nail, I think of one of the buildings, and so he was suggesting, I don't know which building number 23 is.
Bill Masaro raised the question of whether he picked the right buildings, is what I'm saying. So I, we shouldn't just move ahead with the buildings they chose. I would, I would look to Bill to give him some advice on that.
I suggested to John, when I saw John Thompson over the weekend, that they go into the, because John was concerned about the buildings presenting safety hazards. And, yeah, I suggested to John to go into the building where the clothing sales used to be with the exterior elevator, because that one's in pretty good shape.
So I think Bill's, Bill's question, one part of the question was, you're looking at a building that's already been surveyed. So have your, have you, have you, are you looking at the information that we already have about the building? And then I gather the second building was the mirror image of the first building. So if they're basically trying to assess buildings, they're looking at the same building twice and a building that's already been partially looked at rather than other stuff. I, I, I'm not trying to, I, I don't think this affects the willingness to let them have access to the building. It just is, they should know not to, before they just move ahead with their plan, maybe their plan isn't the best one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sorel.
If you're, my recommendation would be to require them to sign a waiver and indemnify, indemnification with the town, which is essentially in the license agreement we would give to anybody else.
Okay. So you can provide us with that language for them to sign then?
But aren't they accessing the building to assist the town in what we're doing? I mean, do we do that for other? Okay.
They're, they're, they're a third party contractor and they, we're, we're giving them access to a building that is, you know, potentially dangerous. So they, in order, you know, that would simply be a condition of their doing it. I mean, their general contract, if they have a general contract with the town, that's got broader language anyway that that deals generally with these types of things, but given the specifics here, I would require them to sign it. Sign basically the license agreement, which is, which gives you the waiver of liability, establishes they have their own insurance.
And to be clear, they
The license agreement that Chris has.
Nick is providing us clarity. I think you said that they're not a contractor to the town.
That's correct. They are not under contract with us.
Yeah, they're, they're, the New Ecology, I think, is being paid by a grant from the state or something.
Yeah, I think Ever, Ever Source is helping.
Well, the more reason, if you're going to give, if you're going to give a third party access to a, a town building that's normally not, the public's not allowed to access for safety reasons, I would still require them to sign the license agreement as a condition of entry. That's my recommendation.
So Mark, if you're, if you're saying that, then every time we give a tour of any director or onsite representative who wants to move there, they should be signing that license agreement before they even go in the buildings.
Well, frankly, first of all, I'm not aware of what's going on in the past and how much time people have expended. But anyone that's spent any significant time in these buildings or being authorized to do things like take measurements or surveys or whatever, the good practice would be to require that, yeah. I mean, if somebody is just going to open a door and somebody's going to take a quick look around, that's no big deal, but it's a matter of degree. The longer they're in there, the more they're doing, the more potential for problems.
Okay. We can get that over to them then.
So we're in accord that they can have access. They just need to sign the Mr. Sorel's waiver.
It's a license agreement. They need to sign the
License agreement, yep, okay. Consent agenda is, seems to be blank. Citizens comments seems to be blank yet again. Residents, you're letting us down. Get on our citizen comment list, please.
Town administration. We should put like a time, like a, like citizen comment ends at 9:00 PM or something. If you can, we can't be inviting citizen comment at 10:30 PM.
We don't want it. We could.
It's true. I thought it was fun. 11:30 and later.
At our last meeting, we had a resident show up in pajamas. I thought that was interesting.
Mr. Chairman, as long as you, if I may.
Yes, please.
On, on that issue of citizen comment, it does present potential open meeting law problems. So you have to pretty well bracket it. We have language we use, and it's right on our agenda in Franklin, that basically says they have a set amount of time to speak on something that's not on the agenda, and there won't be an interaction between the council and the person.
Well, we have a procedure on it, Mark. We have a procedure we've adopted for it.
All right.
You gotta sign up, you gotta sign up in advance.
And, and there's not going to be interaction with the Board of Selectmen on whatever they're talking about. They're just going to make their presentation.
I, I don't remember what the procedure says. I mean, we adopted it a couple of years ago.
Uh, well, we, we
That becomes a problem that the Board of Selectmen ends up deliberating something that's not on the agenda.
Well, the idea is they're supposed to sign up in advance and it gets on the agenda. I, I think under the procedure, I think under the procedure, people are supposed to sign up 48 hours in advance, so we can put the topic on the agenda.
Okay, that's not a problem. As long as the topic's identified, but if you just have citizen car, so those, if this is just a placeholder here, then fine, forget what I said, but.
This is a placeholder, just like the blank consent agenda, the blank selectmen's report, so all the rest of it.
Okay.
It's, somebody's name will be on there if anybody ever signed up. Only one person ever has. Only one person ever has.
All right.
Town Administrator Updates.
I just have a couple of things. Just to let everybody know, the town clerk has announced that nomination papers are available. You can go to the town clerk website, but we will have seats available on the Board of Selectmen, Town Moderator, Town Clerk, Assessor, School Committee, Library Trustee, Planning Board, Parking Rec Commissioner, Housing Authority, and Trust Fund Commissioner. And she has all of her information on the website regarding dates and when you need to get your forms back. Second thing, we're keeping a close eye on the storm. We will give an update on Wednesday night if we need to close any of our municipal buildings. I did talk to Gene and Brett earlier, and they are going to keep a close eye on the weather regarding the first night of the holiday lights at the state hospital. So I'll let everybody know what the plan is for that as well. The other thing, I sent a message out to the Selectmen this weekend. We've moved the town hall drop box. Our trustee green drop box, that's usually right behind the back entrance of town hall, has now been moved to Jane's Avenue. So you can actually pull up and drop off without having to get out of your car. And we would encourage people who are dropping off payments or correspondence with the town hall to use that. Especially with our COVID numbers where they are, we'd like to, to limit the amount of contact in the town hall. For those people who are worried that we didn't have a drop off box for people who are walking, we are actually going to put a new box out front where we see more of our walking traffic. And we plan on doing that in the spring. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Selectment reports, Gus?
A few things. One, the, the, the State Hospital Development Committee did not hold the meeting. They had a backup meeting that was scheduled for December 2nd, for December 2nd. If Bev Gallo had questions for us, she's been working on pulling the RFP together. We did not need to have that meeting, so that one did not take place. I attended the MSBA webinar on model schools that was held. It was half, half a day webinar on December 4th, which featured Nick's Marlboro project as one of its projects. It basically went through the experience that Marlboro and Taunton had in exploring the model school design in the buildings that they built. In the case of Marlboro, the report that came back from the superintendent in Marlboro was that the process worked very well. They, they saved money. And one of, one of the ways that they saved money was actually because the, first off, the architectural design process was less elaborate. But the construction schedule allowed them to complete the project six months earlier, which in it, which just inherently saves money. And I gather for Marlboro, having the new school available prior to COVID, it sounds like that new school was actually a, a nice facility for them to tap to do the, the, the school operations that they're doing in Marlboro. So that, that at least pointed out the potential for the model school design. Following up on that, I, and I would, Taunton was, I don't think, a particularly applicable case. Taunton was, I don't think, a particularly applicable case. They used it a little differently. Following up on that, the school building committee had a joint meeting with the school committee. I, I listened in on that one. And at that meeting, the building committee, with, with the overall support of the school committee's members voted to at least pursue with MSBA, with the submission of the PSR, they would be indicating to the MSBA that they at least want to explore the potential for model school designs as a possible approach to doing this. And my questions of Mike Quinlan earlier tonight, we're, we're getting at the issue of how that gear meshes with a net zero gear to see where we're going to go. But at least there's the potential to find some opportunities to reduce the cost of the school, possibly with the model school design. And then tomorrow night, the, the State Hospital Development Committee will be meeting. Bev is supposed to be coming in with her first draft of the RFP. The target is that our next meeting will be in the middle of January. So the, the RFP is a fairly complex document. We'll also be reviewing the draft of the marketing plan. So Mass Historic requires us to have a marketing plan to reach out to try to get developers who, who could potentially be interested in responding to the RFP. So those two things we'll be getting copies of tomorrow. I had a, I had a brief conversation with Todd Trebenko about what he thought, I thought the Board of Selectmen would like by way of the opportunity to review the RFP. I suggested to him that what we should do on the Development Committee is get the draft tomorrow night, give the committee what will effectively be nearly a month to review it, because we won't be meeting again till mid-January. But at the point that we have a draft RFP that we believe is refined, that we would then provide that draft RFP to the Board of Selectmen to review and comment on. So you know what it's, what it says, what it's doing, and what it's trying to accomplish. And that's probably the right time for you all to weigh in on what's in it and what your reactions are to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mike?
That's it.
Um, not much to add. I think we have, Christine, are we going to have another bargaining session with the police next week?
Uh, with fire?
No, with the police. I thought you.
We have not, sorry. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I didn't know if we had one. So fire, we had one other bargaining section. I was able to discuss it briefly in the executive session earlier today. So there'll be more to report on that in January, hopefully. Otherwise, I don't think I have anything else to report. And just on the, on the RFP, Gus, is, is is the Development Committee planning to take public input through your process? Or you're anticipating that it being sort of going to the public when it comes to us and we'll take public input sort of at the Board of Selectmen level?
Well, as, as a practical matter, after tomorrow's meeting, the initial rough draft from Bev will be publicly available. We'll be talking on the committee. We're not, we're not convinced or at this point, we haven't decided whether there's like a formal public input process. I mean, this is, this is taking this, the master plan, taking the zoning, packaging that into a commercial RFP that can go out to people. So the public, public's comments are obviously welcome. This isn't exactly an audience participation kind of thing.
No, but Gus, if it's publicly available tomorrow and they have a month to send comments, that to me is, is public.
So we don't, so the short, so the short answer to your, so the short answer to your question is the draft RFP will be available to the public to review as of tomorrow's meeting. We are not specifying a deadline for public input. Certainly at this stage, we wouldn't be. You know, we're not even formally presenting it to you until a month from now. The intention was certainly to be willing to accept public input. In the committee, I think tomorrow night, we'll be discussing to the extent to which we want to have any formal, formally scheduled events or opportunities that are structured to encourage it. And, and I don't, I don't know where the committee will come out on that. But I would say that this is, this is a commercial document that we're putting together. There's not a lot of, you know, open-ended, what would you like to see kind of stuff. It's trying to put something in. It's kind of a little bit like the, at a more complex level, it's a little bit like the RFP for the Hinckley property. There's, there's, yeah, you take input, but it's just kind of a formal document, if you see what I'm saying.
Okay. And for me, I had the meeting of the Medfield Coalition for Suicide Prevention and the Energy Committee and Medfield Foundation. Medfield Foundation has had a very successful response from the town to its first annual appeal. So thank you to the residents. Still plenty of time to get in donations to the Medfield Foundation's first ever annual appeal. The Energy Committee is working on a, very actively on a number of fronts. Anybody interested in climate or energy saving issues is, I would encourage them to, to come to a meeting and, and see what's going on. Very active committee at this point. And that's it for me. Informational? Anything there that we should be talking about?
No, they're just there for you to review.
Okay.
All right. Well, then I will move that, yeah, we're, we're going to need another meeting before the end of the year to deal with the solar issue at a minimum and, and the MSBA stuff and the rest of it. So we should probably set that. I mean, I, for me.
The 29th is a Tuesday.
I know for the MSBA, that's too late.
Right.
Too late. And I talked to Mike tonight after he spoke and he's not sure he'll have his meeting before the 22nd. So let me talk, work with him tomorrow. Once he finalizes his date for the meeting, we should be able to set ours. And the two, only two agenda items I would have would be the MSBA letter and the information we need to process on the solar.
Yeah. Right. So I'm free on December 24th in the evening.
I'm not. I, I, I'm not. I have to be out delivering presents.
Oh.
Christine, next week and the, and the week in between Christmas and New Year's, we're not going anywhere. And only the Board of Selectmen is contemplating a meeting during that period of time. So I have flexibility.
I do my best to avoid it.
Practically, I think it's got to be Wednesday, the 23rd or Monday, the 28th of December. So.
I've got something on the 28th already. So.
Well. When, when does Mike plan to have his meeting? You know?
He's not sure. He was hoping Monday or Tuesday. So I'll, I'll talk to him again first thing in the morning. He was, he had polled the members tonight to see what they were able to make.
And if he did that, that would mean all the things would be fixed and the meeting would be just to approve everything, right? So, so for sure by the 22nd, this should all be done. We could meet on the 23rd.
Yeah, as long as they have their meeting on the 22nd, yes.
Okay. All right. For me.
I didn't move the return.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby.
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye. Good night, everybody.